This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting for December 18th, 2017. As your Board of Education, we're happy to be here with you tonight and happy we have so many people here. So, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with energy and justice for all.
Thank you. Patty, are we in compliance with the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much for doing that for us. And will you roll call for a quorum, please?
Commissioner Duhax?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Lou?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
So, we're all here to start this board meeting and it starts with one of my favorite parts of our board meeting, especially when we have people here for the public forum. We usually give 30 minutes at the beginning of our school board meetings, time period in which citizens may address the board to express viewpoints or concerns on the agenda or non-agenda items. The 30-minute period may be extended at the discretion of the board. And each person that is signed up here tonight, we have nine, I think, will given four minutes to address the board. And really think about when someone comes up to address the board, if you have something new to add because we do hear what you have to say and we don't have to repeat things over and over again. And that helps everybody here tonight. So, and also we don't hear personal complaints about school personnel and that's not part of what this open part of our meeting is for. So, thank you all for coming tonight. I feel this energy in the room. So, the first person on our list tonight for four minutes is Maria Selsor. Please come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Selsor. I live at 1128 Jensen Road in Eau Claire. I am really, really excited to be here tonight. This project, I have two children. I have one in second grade at CVMCS and a four-year-old that will be starting 4K in the fall. I am a recent transplant to Eau Claire. We moved here about four years ago, almost. I just think that this project, as it's been proposed by this group and the Little Red School as the location, I just think that this, that that school and its property is an amazing untapped resource for this community. And I would love to see that utilized in some way. And I can't, really can't think of a better way to utilize it than what this group has proposed. I think that for some, this idea of a charter school, it might sound a little risky, but I mean, we have such an incredible model here already with the CVMCS and what a success that school has been and the innovation that we've seen come out of that school. So, in that sense, I don't, I don't see it as risky as some other communities who are just going into this for the first time, I think. I, I think that this is the perfect timing for this project. We've got these, first of all, CVMCS is established. It's been around. It's, it's, it's doing so well. And we also have these innovation and Arctic Zones that are popping up and tend to be, seem to be a huge success as well. And, you know, we have the, the property that's sitting there empty. And we also have a group of parents that seems incredibly dedicated and excited about this project. And, you know, some momentum going in the community. So, I'm, I, I think that the time is now. I think that Eau Claire is really on the cusp of something pretty amazing with this project and that Eau Claire is really poised to become a leader, not only in the state, but beyond with this new school. Thank you.
Maria, can, is your?
Yes.
Address Jensen Road, you said?
Yes.
On here, it says 2390 Ridgeview Drive.
Yeah, I have two addresses, but either one's fine.
And what's the other one? 112?
1128 Jensen Road.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The second person on our list is Salika. Thanks for coming tonight. State your whole name and address. Thank you so much.
My whole name is Salika Duxworth-Lauten. I live at 2211 Viennettaera, Eau Claire, Shawtown. I am here representing uniting bridges and a number of our African-American residents to ask that the Eau Claire Area Public Schools formally partner with Martin Luther King Remembrance Program, starting 2019. So, what we are asking for is three things. And we're doing this because the majority of the students who are reading in our program are from Eau Claire Area Public Schools. The majority of people helping in our program are teachers at Eau Claire Area Public Schools. And we have a lot of people who are, and the three children on our poster, two of them are from Eau Claire Area Public Schools and one of them belongs to one of your school board members. So, we are asking for three things. The first thing would be help with music so that we could showcase one of the musical groups in the district each year. This is the second year we have not had an Eau Claire Area Music Group and we would like to bring back one of them. The second thing would be to ask the elementary schools to come up with a joint assignment that could be either written or visual that we could highlight at the program or that we could display, if it is visual, if it is art, we could display during one of the readings or during one of the musical pieces. So, I'm thinking of enough pieces that I could roll a PowerPoint with it. The third thing we are asking for is help with our marketing, that our program would then work with you to push out through your social media, to push out through your partnership connections and to send flyers home to children in their backpacks. So, I'm making a formal request today. And if you have questions, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if you want me to come back later.
Thanks, Salika. We don't entertain questions at this point in time, but it's duly noted in our minutes and so we'll have to connect back, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much for connecting with your school board. Yep, appreciate that. I then have people crossed out, so Amy Dunn. Hi, Amy. State your full name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Dunn. I live at 3366 Locust Lane. And I'm here tonight also to talk in support of the Little Red Nature Center School Project. I am a mother of two students who go to Eau Claire Public Schools. Gabriel is nine. He's a fourth grader this year. And Zoe is five. She's in 4K. They also both attend Chippewa Valley Montessori School and we have been thrilled with the education that they've received there. They're both engaged and passionate every day. They love to go to school. They come back talking about the different kinds of projects that they're working on in school, the work, the special work that they're doing. And we're really thrilled with that as parents. I'm also a teacher. I teach fifth grade at Locust Lane Elementary School. And I love the work that I do there and I love the students that I teach there. I really do. And I think that this idea of student engagement is a really big, difficult piece for a traditional classroom. In our own surveys, 50-ish percent of students feel engaged in elementary school. And I feel like at elementary school, when kids are bubbling with curiosity about the world, there shouldn't be a question about whether they feel engaged in their school day. And it's sad that that goes down when they get in those middle school ages. And anything that we can do to bolster student engagement and passion for learning, I think is something that we need to pursue. I was really excited that the Arctic Zone opened up at North Star. That's our neighborhood middle school. And so, that's where my son will be going. And I was thrilled that he would have that opportunity to maybe be a part of Arctic Zone. But I know that the ability to get into that program is limited by the space that's available, by the staff that's allocated to that program. And yet, I think it's very, very critical that we expand those opportunities, not just with that one learning modality, that type of project-based learning that they're doing at Arctic Zone, but two opportunities that are like environmental education for students and beyond that as well. So, you have a very well-designed proposal being brought in front of you. This group has clearly looked at connections away from the Eau Claire community as well to look at models of different schools that they might go to. And as a teacher who's even worked in groups at our school, talking about what kind of an innovation zone could we do here to do some of the same kind of engagement work, I can tell you, it is really difficult to get a group together to figure out exactly what is the magic bullet that we want to, you know, explode in our school to make kids excited to be here every single day. And you have a group that's really put a lot of passion into that. I had a student last year, and I'm not going to name his name, but he, he had a hard time coming to school every day. He had a, he had a great sense of humor. He loved comic strips and he loved writing comic strips. He was very engaged in that. He was incredibly interested in YouTube and making his own videos. But we only had so much time in the day that he could dedicate to that kind of project. He's at Arctic Zone this year and he came back to visit me this fall and he was beaming in a way I'd never seen him beam last year, except when he produced his first comic book last year, which he did do as a result of his concerted effort during daily five-time, putting together really wonderful, really wonderful pieces. But he talked about how important it was for him to have the space to be him in school, that he could dedicate himself to a project. And honestly, he, as a kid, I would be concerned would be dropping out of school if he wasn't in that kind of a special program that had his interests in mind and that had his heart kind of at the centerpiece. And I feel like this project can do the same kind of thing for many other students who have different kinds of passions, who connect with nature, who really want to become engaged citizens in a different way. So, I hope that you give them very strong attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person on our list is Erin Gravine.
Good evening. My name is Erin Gravine. I live at 1824 Fenwick Avenue. I have two children in the, in the school district here. One's at, one's in high school and one's in middle school. Kind of came here on a whim. I didn't, my wife told me that this was tonight and I just wanted to make an appearance and listen to the ideas. I'm really intrigued by the project that is, that they're proposing for Little Red. I think it's really an excellent idea to try and engage students. I guess what I'm hoping to hear or what I'm asking of people is just to consider additional options. My high school student, he's a freshman and has a very difficult time with social anxiety, being in a large high school. And I, you know, when I first heard about the Little Red Project, it kind of perked my interest and was wondering out loud, you know, could there be another opportunity at Little Red in addition to what they're proposing or maybe a different location where, you know, students who do have a hard time in these large schools with social anxiety, other, and other issues, ADHD, whatever you want to throw out there. But I found that last year, when my son attended the Learning Center here in town, which is relatively new to those who don't know about the Learning Center, that's at the Eau Claire Music School, I saw a big turnaround in him. I mean, he still had issues, but a lot of the things he was dealing with at a larger school setting in a large group, you know, he was able to do far better at a smaller setting. So, my hope is that, you know, maybe we could look at, you know, some type of agenda that included engaging smaller groups of kids like my son who has social anxiety and maybe make it a part of what Little, what these folks are proposing, Little Red, or maybe there's something else that is a good fit for my son. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Next on the list is Nick Poss. Hey, Nick.
Hi, my name is Nick Poss. My address is 1807 Woodland Avenue. I'm here to speak in support of the Little Red Nature Campus. And I'll approach it just from three points of view. One is as an educator. My wife and I worked with the school district and McKinley Charter School to start the Learning Center last year. It's an alternative day program for middle school students who are not necessarily succeeding in a typical classroom setting. And looking at the proposal for the Little Red Nature Campus, I, I see so many of the things that I, that are working well for the students who come to the Learning Center. The ability for them to be passionate and excited about what they're, they're learning has been a very, a profound way for them to build their self-esteem, to help them manage their emotions and their behaviors. The benefits have, have really been incredible. Eau Claire already has a great school district. What's, what's the next thing beyond just being really, really good? The school district has already looked into innovation and is, and is moving in some innovative directions. And this would be an amazing next step. It would really put our district kind of at the forefront of some new movements in, in public education. I'm also here as a business owner. I own the Eau Claire Music School. And I've been a part of what's called the Chippewa Valley Future Region Project. It's just bringing together people from all over the area, specifically to discuss the future of the creative economy, which has had a big impact in, in our town recently. Something that's come up repeatedly, we've had two sessions so far, is the importance of having educational options to draw in people from around the country, the people who are going to help to drive and grow the economy, and then to retain those people. I moved away from Eau Claire and when we moved back, I was excited to come back because I knew my kids were going to get a good education. So, that piece of the puzzle can be, could be a great part of kind of driving the regional economy forward in the future. I'm also here as a father. I have two kids, one of whom is in Flynn right now, having a great experience. But I see also the differences in their personalities, the way they learn. And I can see already, you know, how, how are these guys going to fit into the school cultures, you know, where they end up? And having those options, having those alternatives as a parent is a very reassuring thing. It's something that makes me feel good about the community. And it would be amazing to see these, these new options available. Also, just knowing the people who are coming forward with this proposal, they're incredibly dedicated, intelligent, caring, driven people who, you know, I could see making this a reality. So, it's not just kind of a proposal that's, you know, being lightly floated out there. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks very much, Nick. The next person on our list is Vanessa Messner.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Messner. My address is 1009 East Tyler Avenue. And I too am speaking in support of the Little Red Nature Academy. And just like Nick, I come to the board tonight in a couple of different capacities. Number one, I'm a parent of three kiddos in the Eau Claire School District. Two are at Mann's in fourth grade and in third grade and one is at the Nature Academy in the 4K program there. And just like Nick had said, my kids, you can see that they all are learning in a different way. My two older ones are definitely having a great experience at Mann's. We just bought a new house one mile away to stay in that district. That's how much we love the school. And they're, they're having, they're getting a great education there. But my daughter, I think she could do more. She's a leader. She's an innovative thinker. And I think, given the opportunity to kind of think outside the box, she could really blossom. So, I think that the proposal for this Nature Academy would be right up her alley. I also am a small business owner in Eau Claire. I own the Lily Pad Lab. And the Lily Pad Lab focuses on science education for little ones. And in starting the program, I have been giving, given the opportunity to meet a lot of like-minded people who feel that science is important and science is essentially the exploration of the world around us. And as little, little kids, we're all curious about the world and we can take that curiosity and just continue to nurture it. And if we continue to nurture it as they get older, these are the problem solvers and the people who are going to make a difference and help us where we need, where we need help in the future. So, all these families that come to Lily Pad Lab for those opportunities, I think would be in supportive of, in support of this school as well. And I was thrilled to read in the proposal about the opportunity to partnership. Thirty acres of land seems like a dream to me and to bring classes there and to do, have different experiences there as a small business owner just sounds like a thrill. So, again, hope that you guys can listen to their proposal with open hearts and minds and give these ladies a chance. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Vanessa. Last person on the list is Shayna Brazil. Did I say that correctly? Please tell me and correct it when you come up, please. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Shayna Bresel and I live at 3338 Runway Avenue. I kind of apologize, I had a lot to say, like Vanessa did. I'm a mother of four children who attend Eau Claire School District schools, ranging from ninth grade to kindergarten. And anyone who's taught children, raised children, dealt with children, sorry, my heart is racing 100 miles a minute.
Calm down. It's okay.
Can tell you that every child presents, it's themselves in a different way with different needs. And I can say as a mom of a daughter who is in her second year at the Arctic Zone at North Star, that it has been an amazing program and we didn't really know what we were getting into. You know, we started when it started and I had never heard of that type of learning. And I, we find it to be very individually driven. You know, like you set, each student sets their, my understanding how I, I'm not a teacher in that group. But they set their own goals and then they work towards them. And the students are learning how they learn and recognizing what works for them and what doesn't work for them. And they present their own conferences. And it has been a blessing for my daughter Ava. She is not a traditional, you know, what some people would say, a traditional student who does, doesn't have difficulties in a traditional classroom. She does. And she has a lot of, she does have a few medical diagnoses that don't limit her, but may challenge her. And I feel like this classroom and those teachers who are so dedicated and literally pioneering the way, in my opinion, have really allowed her the space to learn with her peers. And I really had feared that when she began middle school and then following through high school, that she would have kind of gotten lost in a way that elementary school kind of kept her on the path. So, I'm sorry that I'm just sharing my personal experience, but I think a lot of people didn't know what program-based education. I may be up to, I don't know. Sorry. But anyway, a lot of people didn't know what the Arctic Zone was, didn't know what this was. And so, I think I just wanted to share my experience with it and just be an example. I guess, I don't know. That's all I wanted to say, that I think it's wonderful and I really hope you consider this for other students in the Eau Claire School District to be able to get this opportunity. Okay, sorry. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Shayna. You'll have to do this more often so then you won't be so nervous. That concludes the list of people who signed up to speak this evening. If you're staying for the presentation later, under Committee Reports, we do offer public input after each of those as well. So, there would be another opportunity for comment at that time. So, that takes us on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hardebeck, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. On January 2nd, we will have a Parent Advisory Committee meeting that will be 7:00 o'clock here at the Administration Building. On January 8th, at 8:45 a.m., we'll have Policy and Governance Committee meeting that will be followed later in the evening at 7:00 p.m. with a regular school board meeting. Both of those meetings will be held at the Administration Building. On January 9th, the LEAP Committee will meet at 4:00 p.m. And on January 18th, the Demographic Trends Committee will meet. On January 22nd, Policy and Governance will meet. We'll have another school board meeting. And then Budget Development will meet on January 24th at 11:30 a.m. And all of those meetings are held at the Administration Building. So, tonight, we have a very special student recognition. Bailey Kelly, are you here? Oh, stand up, thank you. She is a sixth grader at South Middle School and she participated in a challenge by Google and donors choose to create a Google logo. And you will see that image when you log into Google. We also have kind of sample tonight to show you. Bailey's logo was one of 20 selected nationwide to be featured on the Google website during Computer Science Week. She created this with the support of her technology integration teacher, Randy Stanley. And Randy, are you here? But your principal is here. Principal Ziegers, stand up and represent your school. And this is during an hour of code activity. Bailey's initial design could not be displayed due to a copyright issue with Minecraft. So, she submitted a second one, which is featured on the Google site this week. And you can see the logo. So, Bailey, age 12, Eau Claire, Wisconsin.
Bailey, I kept going back and watching it over and over and over. So, can we, if we click on it, will it, will it do it? Because I clicked on it and I could, no. So, so what it does is, can you explain Bailey, what happens with the movement on it?
So, there's this girl who is, say, just sort of like, but it's supposed to be that she's putting something and then the, the, the.
But there's a little literacy on there too when she, when she does. When she types, it says tap, tap, tap. I love that too. That was great.
So, Bailey, we are really pleased for you and thank you for putting us on the map, the Google map. We also have Gwen Nemitz with us tonight. She's from Great Lakes Higher Education Guarantee Corporation. Great Lakes will be granting Lake Shore Elementary School $6,610 through their corporate match of the Eau Claire's Office Unite for Our Communities campaign. Gwen, where are you? There you are. Thank you. Thank you for standing. These funds will be used to support a sensory room, classroom libraries, art sculpture tour, music field trip, maker's space items and classroom materials. And a check will be presented on December 21st at 2:20 p.m. in the gym at Lake Shore. So, hopefully some of you might be able to get there. During their annual holiday sing-along. Colleen Miner, are you here tonight? Colleen is the principal of Lake Shore. So- So congratulations to both of you and thank you very, very much for your support of the Eau Claire Area School District and Lake Shore in particular. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. That takes me on to the President's Report. And Board members, tonight I did send you my report with the links and things I'm going to talk about because then you will have the information at your fingertips if you want to follow up on anything I have to say tonight, okay? Charles and I attended the kickoff of the statewide initiative through Jona, which is our joining our neighbors advancing hope group within the Eau Claire area. They're a grassroots organization comprised primarily of diverse faith communities seeking to bring people in the Chippewa Valley into relationship and empower one another to build healthier and fair communities. And Citizen Action of Wisconsin partnered with Jona. Citizen Action is an issue-focused coalition of individuals and organizations committed to achieving social, economic and environmental justice. And the reason I'm talking to you about this tonight, Board, is that both Jona and Citizen Action are in the process of collecting as many signatures as they can to support cutting childhood poverty in Wisconsin in half in 10 years. And it might be a conversation we need as a Board on how we will support that or if we can support it as a public entity. So there's a new dedicated website. I sent you that link within my President's Report tonight that you can, as an individual, sign up and put your name. I talked to Liska Gizi, who is the head of the Health Department and from the City County Health Department, about they're going to have the same conversation with the City County Health Department on what this could look like or how we could maybe talk about this, okay? The other thing I did too tonight was give you a copy of the ALIS report that was given out at this statewide initiative last Thursday. So you have a copy of it. ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Contained Employed. And it talks just about Eau Claire and Eau Claire County. Thought you'd be interested to see this information. And on my report, I also gave you the 2017 Eau Claire County Poverty Food Security Quiz. If you haven't taken that quiz, it's an eye-opener. So I gave you that as well. And also the, I gave you another link on there as well, to the PowerPoint that was used on Thursday. So I sent that in a separate email. So you have all that, okay? Also, this past week, and Joe, you'll probably maybe talk about this a little bit legislatively too, but I did, the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding was put together and they had their first hearing. I couldn't watch it the day of because it was, I was working. So I had to finish decorating my Christmas tree. And so I put it on my phone and I listened to all, every hour. There's two segments of it. Segment, this first segment, and I sent you those links, is the input from the, let me look here. The first segment was from the Legislative Fiscal Bureau. So they go back through all the funding information. And you'll learn some new things too. I had some questions, wrote them down about reimbursement on a few things. And the second part of it was from the Department of Public Instruction and they went through all the Charter Choice pieces as well. For me to watch was very hopeful. Then we culminated that with our Eggs and Issues on Friday. Eggs and Issues on Friday. And we had Moltin Bernier, Petricon Pranch Shinsky there. And the question was asked about what did they think about this commission? And all really felt that funding needed to be looked at and into providing equity across our 422 school districts. So that was hopeful as well. Mary Ann was there, I think Jim, myself and Eric and, anyone else go? So also, you also need to know that our Voucher Transparency Resolution was put into a resolution in Janesville. So I think we're up to six or seven there. And Catherine, Mary Ann, Patty and I worked on our Board Handbook last week. It's ready for our work session in January. So make sure, make sure we get that out so that you can take a look at it before our work session. We're going to use it to look at policy and our governance alignment in January. So thanks so much for all the feedback you all gave to that as well. And then finally, I want to wish you all and everyone in the district and the Eau Claire community a happy holiday and Merry Christmas. I'm so thankful to work with each and every one of you and our community is awesome. So I conclude my President's Report. So that takes us on to our Student Representative Report. And I always try to guess who's going to go first. And Lauren? Yeah, there you go. Take it away.
All right, good evening. This week is exciting because this Wednesday we're having student discussions with Eau Claire Area School District staff, such as Mr. Schmidt regarding class rank and GPA and class rigor. So those will be held this Wednesday during all lunches. And then Ryan and I are working on developing some questions that will add to the AP surveys that students take after they complete an AP course at the end of the year. And those will be regarding student evaluations of teacher performance. So in that way, we can begin to let students' voices be heard in a respectful manner regarding how they felt their education was from those teachers and those classes that are more rigorous and financially impactful. And then, like President Handbookwell said, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. But that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ryan?
Good evening. Going off what Lauren said, the lessons sessions on Wednesday, I'm really looking forward to it because you can hear the students that are passionate about this academic, the work we're doing on the Subcommittee. And I'm looking forward to hearing people who are passionate about it and want their voices to be heard. I'm definitely going to factor that into what I think and what I bring to that Subcommittee when we meet again. And then for the AP surveys that we're going to do is we're going to doctor in a couple of questions to, and kind of start, start small and hopefully in the next few years, make it a complete survey on purely tier evaluations. But this year, we're going to start just a couple of questions in the AP survey that all students take who will take AP courses. We're seeing a couple of questions this year that involve the teachers and the instruction throughout the year. And another thing that I brought up at the meeting with Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Oldenburg last week was that possibly publishing the passing rate for AP courses. Again, this is all about the financial part of it that if you're going to be paying $95 to take a test, I think people have to understand what the passing rate is, what the history is. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Ryan. And that takes us on to our School Board Committee Reports. Budget Development Committee? I don't have two buttons. You have two buttons.
The Budget Development Committee did meet on the 13th of this month, last week. We spoke about a few different topics, including athletic fees. We went into some detail about the comparative analysis that we're doing against some of the other, I think if we look at the other Big Rivers schools here and trying to compare fees and costs, not just fees but also costs. And that's an ongoing process. We looked at the five-year capital plan, which will be coming up here to the full Board tonight. It's on the agenda. We looked again at OPEB and made some slow and steady progress on our discussion with that. And I think we will not be meeting again until January. But with the holidays, that's the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. Commissioner Harder chairs the Budget Development Committee. Demographic and Trends, did they meet? Go ahead, Laurie, you want to talk a little bit about that? Thank you so much.
Demo and Trends met on December 14th and the main focus of the conversation was information regarding the Highclare development on the north side. So we're looking at transportation costs, enrollment trends in surrounding areas, equity, building capacity and logistics of sending these families either to Locust Lane Elementary or to Northwoods Elementary. The committee's trying to stay ahead of new developments moving forward to better keep families informed about boundary issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeka. I, I have the last, Joe, you've got Policy and Governance, but I'm going to stick to before yours, okay? Parent Advisory Committee met and the topic was academic and career planning that night, which was really fun. So I thought I'd bring the handouts for the Board so that you can have the flyer. Talked really a bit about the relationships built by every educator in our district in talking with kids about their academic and career planning. Was a great conversation with parents and, parents that night. Mary Ann, do you want to say anything about it?
Well, we're in the beginning stages of the implementation of the academic and career planning. And it is quite an extensive program that is sponsored through the state and it is a state mandate. Of course, we're putting our own spin on it here in Eau Claire. But I think it's going to help us out in a number of ways in terms of perhaps connecting the relevance of the studies to future career pathways for students and also bringing down barriers for students who might feel that maybe college or technical college or post-secondary training is not for them. So we'll be developing pathways for them and giving information and hopefully building relationships, not only within the school but also within the community.
And with families, yeah. It was really fun to be there that night. I also have LEAP Committee, our Learning Environments and Partnerships Committee. We recently met. And we have a presentation tonight at our School Board meeting from a group that approached the Learning Environments and Programming Committee a bit ago. And we're looking forward to hearing that tonight. The initiative and initial development of the proposal to reflect new partnerships between the Eau Claire community and the Eau Claire Area School District. We're also in the process of reviewing and restating the rationale for the committee. When we formed LEAP, what is it, two years ago now? Three years ago? I forget. It goes by so fast. Is we go back and look at it every year for the first five years so that we can tweak it as we go along. We're one of the few districts that has a committee, a standing committee such as this. And so we will be bringing our recommitment to the Learning Environments and Programming Committee in some of our work sessions starting in January to go through the policy and to talk about that. So that's our LEAP Committee Report. And then we can go on to Policy and Governance. Commissioner Logan Bell?
Good evening, everyone. We had a committee meeting this morning. Just as a couple of updates, we created a new home visiting policy, which is on tonight's agenda. Upon passage at, well, tonight would be a first reading for it. But upon its passage, the administration will work with principals, parents, executive directors to create a home visiting guide. And there are no other districts in the state with a policy like this. So we have a really nice opportunity to be a good example on that. Home visiting is a really key part of what we do as a district, increasingly so. We also made a few tweaks to our new crowdsourcing policy based on some administrator and principal feedback. That's up on our agenda tonight as well for possible adoption. And we also finalized a draft of our School Resource Officers' Policy this morning. This is the first time in 18 years that we've looked at this policy. And we're looking to make some substantive changes. So after this morning's meeting, we are now sending the draft to the Chippewa Valley ACLU, Mung Association High School Students, Jona, the university and other regional groups for feedback. And then we will bring a draft to you in January. But I'm very excited about this particular policy reform and I want to thank the many people who have played a role up until now. Yet again, this is an area where we can really be a positive example for the state. So that's what I have for our policy update. Do you want me to go on to Legislative?
Because I always forget it.
Right.
Yes, thanks, Joe. I was going to really call on you tonight.
That's good.
I know, but.
I figured I'd be more seamless.
Thank you.
Okay. So Legislative, a reminder that the WASBE resolutions are now available on their website. To the folks in the audience, WASBE is the State School Board Association and the resolutions are for our Annual Delegate Assembly, which is next month, which is when school boards across the state have the opportunity to make policy and position statements which go to the Legislature and Governor and statewide media. So our district, on behalf of our district, I'll be presenting the Voucher Transparency Resolution, which we brought forward and which has passed through that process. That is the same day that the Governor will be speaking. So I think that we will have a great opportunity to gain some traction on that proposal. Like Chris talked about, the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding, which is new-held and informational public hearing, that featured presentations from the staff of the Legislative Fiscal Bureau as well as DPI. And they led to a pretty lively question and answer session. I watched some of it. The State School Board Association does have a person who is a member of that commission, which is good that we're embedded in that. And there will be opportunities in the coming months for school board member and citizen involvement, which I will share on the district website and at a meeting in the future. The, some things to know for tomorrow in the Capitol, there will be nine new bills that will have a public hearing in the Senate Education Committee. They're all expected to move forward by the majority and many of them would impose unfunded mandates on public schools. One is relating to nutrition education. It would impose a graduation requirement that students must complete a half-credit health education class that includes nutrition education. There is one that is about providing information about mandatory pupil examinations. It would basically require school boards to annually publish on our website a full summary of any pupil examination that we must administer under state and federal law. There's also companion bills that relate to allowing a pupil's parent or guardian to opt out of statewide examinations required by federal law. Current law requires school boards to grant opt-outs of statewide examinations required by state law but not federal. There is also a bill relating to notification of certain construction activities in school buildings. The bill would require a school board to make notifications to interested parties regarding planned construction projects that exceed $10,000. One goal of this, I guess, was to make sure that students with specific health needs or sensitivities are notified prior to any construction work. There is a bill relating to Robotics League Participation Grants, a bill relating to public library data and the ability of rural public libraries in schools to apply for IT block grants. There's one about new accountability reports from DPI being published in November rather than in September. And there are other ones. I will list them all on my page. So go to ECSD.us/advocacy and all of my stuff will be right there for you to read through and enjoy. There is also update on the federal level. The federal tax plan has passed in both houses. It has completed the reconciliation process as well. So I have some information about how, if this is signed and reaches the President's desk before the holidays, which we expect, how this will impact schools. So one neutral thing about the bill is that it is, it ended up not impacting the available $250 tax deductions for teachers who spend their own money on classroom supplies. So that will remain as it is. So that's a good thing. As we anticipated though, the final legislation bans school districts from using the tax-free method of refinancing their school bond debt, which is a move that has helped districts save millions of dollars. So thanks again to Abby Johnson and others for bringing it to our attention that that would happen so that we could act proactively and refinance our 2011 referendum. I have all this paperwork to sign tonight about that. The pending legislation also eliminates the availability, the ability, rather, of people to deduct their state and local taxes that go directly to local services. So that includes public schools. At the same time, legislation provides a new $10,000 incentive for people to send their kids to private schools. It is expected conservatively that the elimination of these deductions, which are referred to SALT deductions, could ultimately cost public schools upwards of $17 billion across the country. There was also a last-minute successful amendment made by Ted Cruz, which provides a tax incentive to parents who wish to homeschool. And that would provide a tax incentive of about $500 million over 10 years for homeschooling families. So there are a number of areas of this legislation that negatively impact public schools. So I just want to be transparent and share all of that tonight and remind folks that over 90% of our country's children go to public schools, whether they're charters or otherwise, public schools. So it begs the question, what happened to the concept of no child left behind? And that's what I have for my report tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan Bell. That takes us on to our Consent Resolution Agenda. The Board will consider approval of all the items on our Consent Resolution Agenda, but you can pull any items to comment or to clarify on them. People in the audience need to know, we've gotten copious information on all of these items and so that's why we entertain a motion en masse to get them passed. So I would entertain a motion to pass the minutes of December 4th, 2017. The minutes of closed session of December 4th, 2017. The minutes of closed session of December 4, 2017. The minutes of closed session on December 6, 2017. The minutes of closed session on December 11, 2017. The minutes of closed session on September 13, 2017. And the financial report, November 2, 2017. Gifts the amount of $16,994.54 for the period of November 1, 2017 through November 30, 2017. Payment of all bills in the amount of $5,898,116 and net payroll in the amount of $3,467,666.39. $606.39 for the period of November 1, 2017 through November 30, 2017. Human Resources and Employment Report. And adopt plans to update Montessori and McKinley as approved in the November 2016 referendum.
Pull that, please.
Okay, we'll pull that one. Can I have a motion for approval on the others, please?
I move approval.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Torres. Can we take a roll call vote, please, Patty? Thank you. Yep, that's fine. I know it takes a little, yep. It's our board docs. Wait time.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Joe made the motion and Commissioner Torres, second.
Okay. Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Torres.
Thank you. Commissioner Duax?
I wanted to get some clarification about the Montessori plans. Which one is recommended? The one with the parking lot or the other one?
Who is here to clarify that? There's Larry. There he is.
The recommendation is the concept that shows the addition, large classroom addition adjacent to the existing building. And then the existing classroom structure would be demolished after the new building is constructed. So it's the concept from the architects basically replacing that whole wing.
Is, which number is that, three or four?
I believe that's four. I don't have, have it in front of me here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Did you have a question about the parking lot? It was in the park, yeah. Well, you will build into the parking lot and then demolish the rest of the building, correct?
Correct.
And then that will, where the building used to be, be part of the parking lot, then?
It becomes more green space and walkway.
Got it. Yep, got it. Okay. Thanks, Larry. Did you want a question to Commissioner Luganville?
I just...
Commissioner Duax, yep.
Well, I just wondered if there's been any resolution about all the pulling up and picking up. And it seems like a dangerous situation on that street. I've been over there at pickup time and their cars are just lined up. And I just wonder if there's been any, any help with that problem from the city.
We haven't had specific talks with that. We can work with the city if we need additional signage there for that. But the hope is by getting majority of the parking off the street that it's going to open up additional spaces and clear congestion around the site.
And is that, is that a one-way street at this point? Or is it considered to be a possibility?
It's not a possibility at this time. In the initial discussions we've had, they prefer to keep that a two-way street.
Thanks, Larry. Commissioner Luganville?
I just want to mention, I know you weren't here at the last meeting when we talked through the plan. And I was, I shared how excited I was that McKinley, instead of just some renovations, they're really getting a new school, which is so exciting for them. And I shared with Mitch, Ms. Kitchell, my, my hopes that whether it's through the RFP process, but certainly beyond that, that the students of McKinley are really involved in that whole reconstruction process. I think that in keeping with the mission of that school, the students that they serve, I just think that it could be an incredible thing. So I hope that you get excited about that idea, too, because I really am. And I just wanted to bring that up again tonight before we vote on it.
I was watching it online, so I did see the comments. We'll talk with the architects. Obviously, there'd be concern from the contractors regarding liability, you know, propness of people being able to be there. But we will hold conversations with them.
Thanks, Larry. Thank you. Anybody else seeing none? Thank you. Can I have someone move item 7.11?
I, I move.
Move, Commissioner Duax, can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wu, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. That takes us into our individually considered resolutions. We have one, 8.1, Adoption of Policy 674, Online Solicitation, Crowdfunding and Crowdsourcing. And I don't know who's leading that discussion. We basically need to read it through. We, we did send it out for some feedback, correct? And so we're ready. Anybody have questions? Do you have anything to add, Joe?
Well, just that there's one section in green, which, oh, it's not on there. But if you, you'll see in board docs, there's one section in green, number three, that came from feedback from administrators. But this did go to principals as requested. It is, it is on there, yeah. So, but if, if folks are good with it, then we can do a first reading and, and I believe vote as well. Right? We already have first reading?
We already, so we, we're, it's just subsequent.
So we can just...
Oh, anybody have any other comments?
Well, I, I will move, do we need to move?
Mm-hmm.
I move approval. And in working with the foundation, the Public School Foundation, I think this is very important that we have a policy about this. And I encourage people to follow the, follow the rules because things could get out of hand if we had any of this crowdfunding.
So we, we have it moved. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bika. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. We have now policy 674. So then that takes us on to, let me see here, we're going to adjourn to committee. We have three things on our committee and we're going to start our committee report with our five-year capital selected projects. Have to pull that back up. Who's leading that discussion? Larry, you're back up, huh? You should have just stayed up here. Yeah, thanks. I'm going to pull mine up here, so. I had a couple.
The Buildings and Grounds Department developed this five-year capital plan. As you know, every year in the fall, we analyze the needs of the district. We look at items that have been identified in the past, determine whether we need to accelerate the process of replacement or repair, or whether we can string things out a little bit longer and bring other projects up. So last year in the presentation of the board, there was the talk of the culinary labs and replacement or refurbishment of those spaces. We met with the staff in the buildings throughout the year, developed a conceptual plan at each site, and then prepared cost estimates for that. So we have those presented in the budget project list this evening. We also have other projects keeping in line with our $1.6 million capital budget that we've had on a yearly basis. We don't have a contingency this year. We're hoping that the projects, if that's what you decide to go with, that we get some good pricing and can pick up some additional money through the bidding process. We also have another listing of deferred projects, projects that we had hopes of doing this year, but with the cost of the culinary labs, you know, we deferred those because of the commitment last year to bring the culinary labs forward. So we have a number of projects there as well. It's by no means inclusive. I believe we had about $5 to $6 million of needs this year. And we've just brought the more critical ones forward, both on the deferred list and on the main budget submitted before you.
Any questions from the board? I had one. As far as the culinary program, that program has grown quite a lot.
I will let Dave Oldenburg handle that since he's on the curriculum.
And meeting the needs of kids in a different way. So I, I just know it's grown quite a bit.
Correct. Once upon a time, you would have had staffing at both schools below a 1.0 staffing. Now each building, each building has grown their staffing to over two FTEs. At Memorial, the interest in the program has capped the capacity for the plant simply to serve all the offerings that you could offer. For example, last year for the first time, and, you know, in my memory anyway, that we were not able to run a, a lab, a pro-start lab, because we just simply couldn't schedule all the students. So we had staff and we have interest, but the facility is limiting the growth now at this point. And that's really a testament to the staff there at that building. And at North High, where you have two labs, one more rudimentary, one more professional lab, the same issue happens there, that because of the demand of the, both the culinary interest and then growth in other areas in family and consumer science, such as health occupations, you're simply exhausting the physical plant.
Commissioner Duax?
Well, I know there's a lot of interest for this program. But this past week on budget and development, that was the first time that we had been given the figures and knew that this was the plan for working on the building, this, and all the equipment this next year. So I would like to request that we delay this just a little bit because there's maybe a couple of months until we can study this a little bit more, because there have been some suggestion that we partner with CBTC and, and look at some possibilities in that department.
Absolutely. We are in, we are partnering with Chippewa Valley Technical College. They're helping us define the pro-start curriculum, which is really the skills and standards to deliver the industry standard curriculum so that students that matriculate through both North and Memorial High School are college and career ready in that band. So we're doing that work on the curriculum piece. What we need to be able to do at both buildings is then augment the physical plant to deliver that curriculum so that our students can, hopefully, those that want to, that exhaust that career pathway, matriculate to CBTC so that they can continue on that career pathway. So partnering with CBTC to allow a student to access CBTC while they're still a student on our campus can be done in two ways. It can be done through the transcribed credit agreements that we have at our high schools. Also can be done through youth options or what's going to be called now early age college credit, pro-start college now. And that allows a student to take a class off-campus at UW Eau Claire or CBTC, IHE of interest. But the issue gets to be, though, when the student does that, they leave our campus, they're really, in effect, giving up two classes for the one class they're going to take over at the IHE because of travel, because of distance, all that kind of business. So it really does behoove us to be able to offer those courses on our campus whenever we can.
Yeah, I appreciate...
I also don't have to pay the bill, so I understand that.
Well, I appreciate that description. Can you describe somewhat the curriculum for that to get a person from the high school program into CBTC, into their program, and what's required?
So the pro-start curriculum needs to be aligned in each building. And you have to have the equipment to be able to deliver the, the opportunity for students to be able to practice the skill and meet the standard. And we can bring out the pro-start curriculum and we can spend some time going through it if you want to. But the instructors are both then certified to be pro-start instructors. So, but a piece that comes with that is having the labs to be able to deliver the curriculum, which our Local Restaurant Association has, has visited with us in, in our advisory committee and said that this is industry standard. So we have that curriculum alignment between CBTC, the Local Restaurant Association, and our instructors. And we're able to deliver the curriculum now with some underestimate of the growth simply because of the physical plant.
Well, I understand it's such an expensive program to get up to standards that I just felt like we needed a little bit more explanation...
Absolutely.
...about the curriculum and what's really needed. How high do we need to take a high school student in how, you know, how, what the depth of knowledge has to be to meet that standard of curriculum?
And, and if you, if the board is willing to approve this project, what you'll be doing is enhancing the current labs. You're not necessarily increasing the footprint of the labs, the space, a bit here and there. But what you're doing is you're really enhancing the equipment and the ability for the instructors to deliver really 21st century curriculum to make, to allow students to be more college and career ready in this, in this bandwidth, in this pathway, which is supported by our, our advisory. And it's identified as a growth area from Chippewa Valley Technical College, the IHE that we align with most locally at UW Eau Claire, they, like, CBTC offers this program. So if, if this is a program that we're going to continue to provide for our students, I really would ask the board to consider making the financial commitment to these labs.
Thank you, Commissioner Duax. Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, we talked about this quite a bit in the last budget development meeting. And I, I think I shared some of Commissioner Duax's concerns. I mean, it just kind of presents itself as a bullseye, these two big numbers here and there. That's really why they bubbled to the top. But then the question came up about CBTC. And I'd like to just press on that once more, if I may. So I understand, if I understand you correctly, the one concern is the amount of time, the travel time, basically eats up a class essentially.
Simply to be able to access programming that's offered outside of our campus. It can be done at the expense of additional...
Basically, one, one class worth of travel time?
In effect, right.
Yeah, essentially, yeah. Are there other sort of, the, the pro of it is we wouldn't necessarily have to make this investment right away to start servicing students and meeting demand potentially, right? So the pro, I just want to make clear. Are there other cons you can think of besides the, the travel time, which is a significant one? Are there others that come to mind?
Sending a student to, the con, so it limits the student's opportunity to explore other opportunities that are offered both at North and Memorial. For example, if there's another transcribed class, or there's an advanced placement class, or simply another class of interest. Maybe my interest, for example, I'm interested in being college career ready in the culinary arts. While doing so, I'd really like an opportunity to participate in theater, right? Maybe that's a pathway for me, maybe not. But it's an opportunity really to educate the whole child by giving the students in the building as many robust opportunities as possible. Really, in effect, when you do Academic Career Planning Guide, what you're, what you're planning with a student, what you're hoping to do is find a college and career ready pathway for the student, right? While you augment those elective courses and some additional courses that a student might have an interest in to grow other interest, but maybe not the... the IHE pathway. That's how we, I think, provide the liberal arts and well-rounded education that we want. And I know I hear the board in support.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, but again, that kind of comes down to the question of just the timing of the travel and the lost opportunity, correct?
Correct. So-
Again, it's a good point. I just want to make sure there aren't others that were not missing from that list of negatives.
Students have 56 opportunities to take courses while they're in high school. Seven per semester. Typically, they're with us for four years. So when you travel, there is a cost with that.
That's right. Makes sense.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, I've, I understand the concerns people are sharing about this. But I do feel that, especially given that our students really want relevancy, they want real-world opportunities, I don't want to provide those for students, basically provide it for them, but at the same time, they have to be, they have to lose out on something else. So I do feel that we should make this commitment. And I mean, it was, what, a year and a half ago, or maybe 10 of us were in that meeting in the Memorial Culinary Lab. And I mean, I think that this is, this has been a need for a lot longer than a year and a half. And especially as we pursue equity between the two high schools, there are equity differences. So anything we can do to move forward on that front, I think, is important. The other question I have is outside of that, and it's about the Memorial Orchestra Room. It's been brought up for several years now as a concern because it doesn't exist. Memorial has a, there's a jazz orchestra, storage office combination room, while North has its own orchestra choir band room. And so it's again, another equity issue. So I'm just wondering if with Memorial, if an orchestra room is, I know that you probably have a secondary list somewhere of a lot of the things that we'd like to do, but they couldn't make it for this year's with the cutting block. So is that somewhere in the next few years? Or could you just talk to me a little bit about that?
Given that I've spent some time at Memorial in my career here in O'Clare, I can talk from that aspect. You certainly could augment the current really all-purpose room that is present at Memorial to offer orchestra, you can make that an orchestra dedicated room. Doing so, you're going to have to change the physical footprint of that area of the building. Or what you're going to have to do is move some programming to a different wing of the building and then enhance, perhaps add on to the footprint of that end of the building. Memorial's unique because it's landlocked by and large. There's some things that you could do at the other side of the building unless you go into the parking lot. But really, you would be probably expanding the footprint of the building at this point to do that, which would be great if you want to do that. But again, I don't have to write the check. But if you're asking us to look at that, Commissioner Luganville, what that would look like to come up with a draft for the board, is there anything you can do?
I guess I'm just speaking as one board member, but I know it's been brought up in the past. So I-
I'm with you.
You're with me. Good. So two board members at least. But I think it'd be definitely good to have something drawn up for our consideration in the future on this, because I think it should be a priority in the next few years.
Sure. I can work with Larry on something a little bit more formal if you'd like, for sure.
I had a question about the length of time the culinary arts piece has been on the docket. I mean, it was up and then not done or thought about. So how long has it been waiting to be brought up to speed?
We, the first meeting that we had with our restaurant association, I think President Comet Boyle, you were there too, Mr. Luganville?
A year and a half.
You were there, right. It was late March, early April of 2016. And then last year, the proposal was, put on the deferred list of the capital improvement plan. So here we are this year.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything about culinary? Yes, Jim?
I did. Dave and Larry, could you distinguish between the capital costs and the equipment costs? Because I don't think the equipment costs are part of that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so then there's, right. So there's, there's equipment costs that will then will go to rounding out the labs if this is approved. We have a list for that. It's a, you know, it's a few thousand dollars for each lab to be augmented with the, you know, different things that you need there, right? So the enhanced silverware, and some of it is consumable, some of it looks a little bit more like equipment, things of that nature, that both, both instructors provided a list for us that they would need. And it's unique because Memorial has a few things that North doesn't and vice versa. And then it's working with Larry about what can we harvest out of the existing labs to be able to augment the new labs if they're approved.
Is there a safety piece about this as well with what we're talking about here in those labs?
There are some safety issues currently at Memorial. Anyway, I know that they're cooking with hot plates from time to time. Code requires that you have a hood over anything where you're doing cooking. That's not there. There's some accessibility issues at both sites and just constraints with size and number of students.
Yeah. And it's a growing program. I think they all want to be unchopped, which I would love to be unchopped as well. Has anybody ever watched Chopped on TV? Have you ever watched it on the cooking channel? Yeah. Commissioner?
What, what is the cost of the equipment? Did I miss something?
I don't have a list in front of me. Roughly thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's about twenty thousand each, I think, wasn't it? Something like that.
Anyone else about the culinary piece? I have one more question about the deferred piece about Daktronics. I thought we were done with Daktronics as far as raising the money and getting them up there. So I was wondering why there's money on here for the Daktronic's accessibility?
In looking at where the control booths are, the one at Memorial is on the upper platform. There's no accessibility to that area. There's an elevator in the building, but you have to go through a storage space or another room to get to that space, and that's against the accessibility requirements. And then the control at North, they're looking at the, the room where they would, they'd like to have that, we'd need to make some modifications with both fiber optic and other data lines to get that there to meet accessibility requirements as well.
Dr. Harder, a bit?
I think the question would be, is the Daktronic's accessible at North, or is it just an accessibility ADA issue at Memorial?
The, the room where they have it at North, that they showed me, there's not wheelchair accessibility around that. There's space around it for people to move, but to meet wheelchair accessibility is where we come into, where we have a problem.
Okay. Thank you to think about that. Commissioner Luganville?
Speaking of accessibility, I'm just wondering if, I know there'd been some conversation about adding some signs for district parking lots across the district for expecting moms, some preferred parking spaces. Is that something that'll be done in the coming year, do you expect?
We're currently looking at solutions for that and trying to develop a budget for that. Well, the cost is probably such that it's just going to come out of my operating budget for the year.
Any other questions for Larry, Dave? Seeing none, thank you. That takes us to our proposal for Little Red Nature Campus. Tim?
Yeah. On behalf of LEAP, the administrative rep on the committee, we are very pleased to introduce Anna Rubicki and Erica Zer, two members of Initiatives for New Directions in Education. They will introduce other group members that are in the audience and then share their proposal. So, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Erica Zer. I live at 1907 Badger Avenue in O'Clare.
And I'm Anna Rubicki. I live at 1710 Russ Street in O'Clare. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. We're so excited to be here. I just wanted to briefly introduce our team members. So if you would stand up. Okay. So we've got Shelley Peters, Beth Martin, Laura Lash, Elizabeth Harder, and Lindsay Miklas. So although Eric and I are going to be doing the talking tonight, this has been very much a team effort. And I just got to say that I count myself really lucky to be in the company of this team. So, Missy, if I can get this a little closer. Can you hear me if I'm here? Or do I need to be here? I'm okay here. Okay. Then I'll do this. So we are Initiative for New Directions in Education, or INDY. You might know us by our working title, which was the LRNC team. And we are here to tell you a little bit about our vision for how innovation could benefit the district and how we'd like to explore the feasibility of a public, project-based, environmentally-focused charter middle school right here in the O'Clare Area School District. Yes. Ooh, okay. So it's a little hard to read. I was very proud of that when I drew it. But that is, tells you a little bit about the background of how we got here. So a group started meeting about two years ago, actually, of, you know, business owners, teachers, marketing professionals, legal professionals. They got together and began researching sort of different innovation educational approaches. The group was inspired by a number of amazing, high-quality programs being offered within our state and across the country. The goal was to advocate for middle school kids to have access to innovative, personalized, and projects-based learning here in the O'Clare Area School District. So in 2016, meetings began. The meetings are the little M-boxes. Those are full group meetings, so not committee meetings or other meetings with outside folks. And folks started doing, you know, interviews with educational professionals, one-on-ones with community members, personal research, that kind of thing. Over time, through that work, the concept crystallized into an outdoors-focused, project-based middle school and nature center, hopefully to be located at Little Red. So the group approached the district, had an initial meeting, and the recommendation was that we go through the LEAP committee and go through that innovation zone process. So even though it's set up for things a little bit different, they thought, we're going to modify it, but let's just start there. So we, in June, went ahead and drafted that step one. It's called an imagination narrative. So that document that you've all received with that initial proposal, the vision, you know, using your imagination, we submitted that on July 3, and on July 11, it was unanimously approved for step one. So that basically means go ahead and develop it further. The following weeks were spent beginning to fill in the details required for step two, with the hope that we would seek full board approval to just keep the work going in September. On August 1, the exec team requested that we instead go through the budget development committee. And so we worked to gather the information we would need to go before them at their next meeting. We started getting costs for building renovation, work needed on the grounds, safety considerations, technology, those sorts of things. And we also began to, you know, identify potential community partnerships and refine the vision further. That committee meeting was eventually set for September, but the agenda was full, so we weren't considered at that time. Now, in early October, which is one of the first, maybe the first blue one, so that's when DPI announced that there was going to be charter money for Wisconsin, which was an awesome surprise. And not some, yes, obviously not something we were expecting. And after that time, LEAP went ahead and approved us for step two and recommended that we receive the approval of the full board, you know, to further develop the feasibility. So it's not a go-ahead, but just an approval to sort of continue this work, explore feasibility, explore demand, you know, that type of thing. And that would include, of course, developing a complete budget, diverse community partnerships, things that we haven't had a chance to do yet. So why are we here and why are we not here? Or why are we not, we're not why we're here. That's it. So we are asking for, you know, we'd like to introduce you to our program. We'd like to get to know you a little bit since this is our first time before you. We've had a great experience working with the LEAP committee, but like I said, we're very excited to be here. We would like to ask for your support to further develop the program. We'd like to have your endorsement to go out in the community and talk about this, see who's interested, see who might like to work with us. We're going to need to do that to build a good program. We know we, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm very proud to be on this team, but we don't have all the tools. We don't have all the perspectives. We don't have all the backgrounds. And we have felt like we couldn't go out and be gathering our greater team together without your stamp of approval. We'd also like to develop, you know, what sort of funding sources could we be looking at? Again, not something we felt we were authorized to do, but we very much look forward to doing that. We would definitely like to look more into the feasibility of Little Red. We'd also like to figure out, you know, maybe that is not feasible. So what would, you know, alternative or temporary locations be to make this program a reality, maybe in another district building, you know, maybe in another place in our community? And of course, we're very interested in potentially applying for this grant and make, you know, bringing in maybe up to $900,000 into our district to make this school come alive. What we are not asking you for, we're not asking you to sign off on the program. We're not asking you to choose a location. We're not even asking for you to let us submit, you know, an application for the grant. We would just like you're okay to go about developing the application. So if we were to submit it, it would definitely come before you first. So what we'd like to do is take the next few months and do some of that work and bring you back that product for your approval. The window of time to get the application in is going to be pretty short, but we really think that it's worth our time and attention. And now Erica is going to tell you a little bit about the program. Okay. So our, hi. So our plan is to share with you what excites us about the program and why we believe it fills an immense need for students and our families. So much of the information that I'm going to share in the next few slides highlights most of what was in our imagination narrative that was approved by LEAP in July. That proposal, which you all have in front of you and have likely read, was for a dual-purpose O'Clare Area School District property, which would include a facility to, in which we would develop a new charter middle school that would serve approximately 150 students, grade six to eight, as well as a district extension campus. So the school would provide students with an engaging, project-based education with high academic standards and a focus on real-world experiences, community partnership, environmental stewardship, and outdoor learning. The District Resource Center, which we have lovingly referred to as the Nature Campus, would be adjacent to the school and would serve the entire student body of the O'Clare School District by creating space and providing facilities for field trips, summer classes, special programs, and intensive study courses. Our proposal to LEAP included utilizing the former site of the Little Red Schoolhouse and its 30-plus acres for this new facility. As we developed our preliminary program, we really felt that Little Red was the perfect site to bring this vision to life. So no matter how many obstacles that may come up, we will probably always feel that Little Red is the prime location for this. However, as we look at feasibility under the charter grant, it is possible that alternative or temporary locations may need to be suggested. So I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about why we believe O'Clare needs this school. So first are trends. Public education is moving the way of innovation and choice. Families and students alike want education that fits their child and their family's specific need. We want our children to leave school feeling confident and capable with collaborative spirit, prepared to enter college or career with the real-life skills necessary to succeed. State Superintendent Tony Evers has a goal of creating districts of innovation, and those, the goal with those is to create local solutions to help make sure all children leave high school with the confidence and competence necessary to achieve their career or collegiate dreams. You have already laid the groundwork for innovation to succeed in O'Clare. In LEAP, you have an autonomous governing body that ensures creative, high-quality, innovative solutions and programs, and creates the space outside of teaching and learning necessary for these programs to succeed. O'Clare is a member of the Wisconsin Innovative Schools Network, which allows our staff tremendous opportunities for innovative professional development, networking, and consultation with highly successful programs all across the state. You have already laid the policy groundwork-
You have already laid the policy groundwork for success. Additionally, demand in our community is strong for innovative programming. Just this year alone, one-third of incoming sixth graders at North Star Middle School, more than the program could accommodate, applied for the Arctic Zone, which is similar in some ways to what we're proposing tonight. Those figures suggest that one-third of middle school families would consider an innovative program. Montessori has a waitlist that could fill two new sections. So innovation, what we discovered is not something typically covered by the surveys in the district, but there was an option on the 2014-2015 Family Climate Survey to write in requests of the then Charter Choice Committee, and families requested more innovation and more choice in programming. Additionally, we believe students need this to stay engaged in their learning. The 2015-2016 Student Engagement Survey showed that our students are reporting a lack of engagement in academic learning. During the 2016-2017 survey, student academic engagement was the lowest-reported score. And to boot, for the past three years, engagement drops off substantially in secondary education, as Amy was saying earlier. This data shows that the traditional system, where highly effective for some, is leaving a significant portion of our students unexcited and not empowered in their learning. And we believe that it is this lack of engagement and lack of choice that lead families and children to choose other avenues for education. We lose middle school and high school children every year to other districts, online schools, homeschool, and private schools. Currently, we have extremely limited options for disengaged middle or high school students to stay within the district and leave the traditional program. The current trend in the highest levels of our government emphasizes highly specialized private schools funded by public vouchers as the answer to choice. As we proceed in the modern climate, we are certain to see a rise in these private programs, likely right here in Eau Claire, that utilize critical public money and absorb our students who feel they do not fit well in our system. We all want equity in our public schools. We all want buy-in. We all wanna feel that public schools work for everyone, but we really believe that we need choice and innovation to improve our community equity. Families need choice within the district. If we wanna increase public support for public education, we need to give those families, perhaps 20% of those utilizing the public system, an option to try something different. That's how we bring people in, and that's how we keep public education strong. We believe that public education in Eau Claire could be revolutionary, and we believe that our program, our school, and this proposed facility is part of the solution to many of these problems. We believe our facility can engage disadvantaged students who struggle in the traditional system. Additionally, the Nature Campus will provide a much-needed hands-on laboratory where students and faculty can add value and depth to their traditional curriculums. We believe that educating staff in innovative principles and ideas will help inform the future of education in Eau Claire for years to come. So, what's the school all about? Our vision for the facility, like I said, is twofold: a school and a district-wide resource center where visiting students may embark on seminar-style intensive study opportunities provided by community partners, district staff, and more. The goal of our school will be to achieve the same high academic standards as the rest of the district, just in a slightly different way. We want a teacher-powered, student-led, personalized, and project-based learning environment with an interdisciplinary and an outdoor focus. So what excites us about project-based learning? As many of you on the board probably know, but maybe some in the audience do not, project-based learning is a model that organizes learning around projects, instead of traditional classes that segregate learning by subject. So for instance, instead of a student visiting a math class, a science class, and a computer skills class, benchmarks in all three subjects might be incorporated into a structural engineering project. A complex task such as this is based on a challenging problem, and it would involve students in design, problem-solving, decision-making, and other investigative activities. Interdisciplinary projects such as this give students the opportunity to work relatively autonomously over extended periods of time, and they culminate in realistic products or presentations that are shared with their communities. Project-based learning gives students buy-in. They gain knowledge and skills by working in an environment that mimics what they will encounter once they leave school. They have an extended period of time to investigate and respond to authentic, engaging, and complex questions, problems, or challenges. They manage projects similar to how professionals like you and I manage our projects. They track their progress, determine their goals, and assimilate feedback from mentors and colleagues. Often, they are working on challenges that have been personalized to their ability and interest. We had a chance to observe this very thing in the Arctic Zone last week, and it was really something to see. If you guys haven't seen it, it's really cool. Around the country, project-based learning that has been implemented as the method of education, not just a once-in-awhile experience, has been proven to dramatically improve student academic engagement. And this is the best part about project-based learning that we found. There's a lot of research out there that points to some incredible findings, and this includes increased performance on standardized measures of academic achievement in reading, writing, mathematics, and social studies, reduced discipline and classroom management problems, increased engagement and enthusiasm for learning, improvement in academic achievement levels of African-American students, decreased dropout rates, it shrinks the achievement gap between males and females, and the best part, project-based learning benefits are not determined by race, gender, or socioeconomic class. We are really excited about the potential for this platform to increase student capacity to think critically, collaborate with diverse populations, initiate endeavors, adapt to change, incorporate entrepreneurship, the list can go on and on. In general, research shows that students in PBL programs experience gains in factual learning equal to or greater than those receiving traditional forms of education. We have seen the success of project-based learning programs all across this state and in our own backyard. So our program is not just centered on project-based learning. We incorporated a diverse number of additional focus areas, which we simply do not have time to go into tonight, but which are detailed in our Imagination Narrative. In the interest of time, I wanna highlight a few areas of focus that we see as instrumental in building the best charter program that we can. So first is a focus on developing a wide range of community partnerships. As part of a project, we anticipate that our students will be building educational relationships and mentorships with public and private partners throughout our region. Examples of this work may be undertaking bird sampling with the Wisconsin DNR, working to build an agricultural business with Mung Mutual Assistance, reaching out to Market and Johnson for input on a construction project, planning an art exhibit at Artisan Forge, or learning to code with the experts at JAMP. The possibilities are really endless in this department. We foresee community partnerships becoming a hallmark of our program, allowing students the real-world experiences necessary to become dynamic contributors to their communities. Our environment will be personalized to each student, nurturing the whole child by allowing them ownership and the freedom to take an active role in their education. Our students will select projects that interest them. They will determine and analyze their own goals. They will take part in their own assessments. They will contribute to the operation of the school. So think menu planning, cooking lunch, maintenance, gardening, they might keep bees, or tap maple syrup, do landscaping. So really, our goal with these experiences is to provide children with the real-life skills necessary to navigate any difficulties they may face at home. These difficulties might be things like food security and poverty, and these might be challenges that they face that we don't even know about. Experiences like this give kids grit, skill, and determination. Students who graduate with confidence in their ability to care for themselves and their environments, who have been encouraged to take on adult responsibilities and make meaningful contributions to their community, will be more prepared to contribute to their post-secondary life, whatever that might be. In that vein, our students will be encouraged to foster an entrepreneurial spirit in all work. We really foresee this as being a place for them to develop some really important, critical career skills that they can take with them once they leave our program. So now on to cultural and social relevance and student experience and academic learning. This is a very important area of focus for us as we move forward in this process over the next few months. As we develop our program, our goal is that we develop something that fosters a personalized approach to allow children from every culture, income level, and experience a high-quality education. Basically, our model will be built so that we can meet every child where they are, perhaps utilizing a model like Epiphany that they use at McKinley, or what they're using in the Arctic Zone. No matter our students' skill level or background, we will tailor learning to their specific need. Students in our program will develop a strong sense of cultural and social relevance working alongside diverse communities in their day-to-day projects. And really, we want our program to embody diversity at the highest levels. This means that our organization will develop a subcommittee whose specific task it is to include diverse members in our program development. We really wanna seek input from our community partners so that we can build projects and partnerships that matter and that give kids a diverse experience out in the community. A hallmark of our program is outdoor education, as it has been proven to support interdisciplinary learning and build a capacity for students to become engaged, confident, ethical, and socially-conscious individuals. We go into a lot more depth on this in our Imagination Narrative, so if you want to see some of the research that we came up with, or some more information on that, you can refer to that document. So we foresee this program being uniquely organized, so not just a unique program, but a unique governance structure and organization. We are considering exploring the following options for organization and governance: teacher-led administration, balanced calendar and later start times, integrated standardized and/or alternative assessments, limited optional, or no homework policies. We foresee the utilization of technology as vital to a high-caliber education. Our students will use technology in a practical, meaningful, and balanced way that supports the work of their projects and which prepares them to compete in a changing world. We foresee this occurring as real-world applications that help develop transferable skills students may use in high school, college, and careers. So back to those entrepreneurial projects, they might be doing web design, they might be running accounting software and managing spreadsheets and that type of thing. So how we'll deal with world language, music, art, theater, athletics, those things is in development. We think it is important that students get exposure to a wide variety of activities and be able to pursue their passions, whether that means incorporating their particular interests in their core project work, or bringing in outside experts to provide specialized lessons, or whether these students might join into larger group activities at other schools. This is one of the things that we'll be especially interested to get input on from educators and families as we move forward. So a little about the Nature Campus, which is really the part of this proposal that excites us the most, particularly when we look at the space at Little Red. We foresee this space as a special area of the facility designed to house special programming, whether provided by school staff, students, community partners such as UWVC, CBTC, or Extension. The courses and programs offered here will provide project-and-place-based experiences for the whole district. Think special events, summer and after-school classes, camps, and intensive studies in the form of science research, landscape painting, fiction-writing workshops, environmental forums, field trips, lessons in agriculture, on and on and on. The possibilities in this space will be endless and available to the entire district. We look forward to speaking with you more about the Nature Campus component of this project. However, since one of our main goals for the near future is to gain your approval to apply for a federal charter grant, which would apply to the school, we thought it best to focus on that part of the proposal tonight. So though we're not going into detail regarding the Nature Campus at this moment, we do want you to know that we plan to develop this portion of the program alongside the school and for them to open at the same time. So one area that we anticipate being an incredible asset of this program and facility will be the ability of this program to disseminate best practices across the district. We will look to our staff and students to share their success and their processes with their colleagues and their peers. This may be as simple as honing a system for tracking student progress through project-based experiences, or providing space for teacher-to-teacher professional development on how to implement PBL and personalized learning in their classrooms. So that's our program, in a nutshell. We believe that it builds off of the tremendous success of similar programs within our region and across the state and country. We believe that it will be an incredible program for Eau Claire. And now I wanna talk to you just a little bit about how we see this program fitting into the greater plan for the district. So I think in our initial research, months and months ago, we really were kind of surprised at how well our program sort of met the goals of the strategic plan. And there were some areas of emphasis that we really felt we aligned very strongly with. The strategic plan really puts an emphasis on implementing an engaging curriculum, which nurtures the whole child and prepares every student to be college or career-ready. It puts emphasis on making sure that each child is healthy, supported, and engaged, that we work to nurture collaborative workers, community contributors, quality producers, and complex thinkers, and that we identify and implement innovative partnerships focused on assuring post-secondary success for all Eau Claire area school district graduates. We believe that our program will contribute tremendous value and weight to these principles. Most importantly, we believe we are at a perfect point in time with the current state focus and grant opportunity to make this vision a reality. And now I'll give Anna a chance to take you through a little bit of information on that grant.
Hey, thanks Erica. Okay, so just briefly, the charter money, we don't have all the details right now because the application has not been released, but we did go to a training on it with the charter person from DPI. So as best as we know, here's sort of the situation with the grant. We're one of only nine states to get money this time around. Wisconsin got the most, with $95 million over five years. So, it's kind of amazing. So 90% of that is actually gonna go straight to sub-grants for schools. The other 10% is sort of the other stuff. And within that 90%, they're gonna be looking to start new charter schools, replicate high-quality charter schools, and expand high-quality charter schools. The application, we know so far that there's gonna be, you know, an application form, an executive summary, a narrative of 25 pages or less, three letters of support, and a school board resolution or authorizer letter approving development of a charter school. I was curious about that, so I asked, "What is gonna be required of the authorizer, you know, before the planning even begins?" And, you know, "Could there be contingencies built in?" And I was told that there's, you know, no prohibition for contingencies, you know, say, grant award, other kinds of funding, that type of thing. So just, you know, rest assured that we have some control over what that resolution would be. Within that application form that I mentioned on the last slide, there'll be some basic school information. So what kind of school is it? This would be an instrumentality of the district, what type of program, that type of thing. They would ask us to lay out the planning process that's happened thus far, and then the plan-to-plan within the future, and then also a five-year budget summary, and that'll be broken down in different ways. They have some funding priorities that we do know about. We know that these grants are gonna go to schools that do at least two of the following, so it can be more, but at least two. Increase access to educationally disadvantaged students, reduce and eliminate the achievement gap for educationally disadvantaged students, serve students at risk of dropping out or who have already dropped out, increase the overall graduation rate, and increase career and college readiness. And that term, "educationally disadvantaged," for those of us like me who didn't know what that meant, this is what it means. So students with disabilities, migrant students, ELL students, neglected or delinquent students, and homeless students. So what can you buy with charter money? You can hire and compensate your teachers and other staff during the planning process. You can provide professional development to those folks. You can buy supplies, you know, training, equipment, including technology, materials, so developing or acquiring those instructional materials, renovations to ensure that the building complies with applicable statutes and regulations, and minor facility repairs, one-time startup costs with providing transportation, so like you can buy a bus, community engagement activities, and then sort of other appropriate startup activities. So all these in this category are, you'll notice, startup things. The non-allowables are more the ongoing things, so, you know, actually, once you're up and running, paying your teachers, providing benefits, student instruction, paying your governance board members, and then remodeling or construction. And you may notice there are some building-related things on here that we're especially focused in on. What is remodeling or construction versus renovations or repairs? And again, that's something that we just don't have all the details on right now. The guidance is gonna come out of the feds, so we will let you know when we know more about that. But we were encouraged that we would presume that at least some building-related costs could be covered by grant funds. So this is just a very simple timeline of how the grant stuff works. So the application should be out any time. The goal was December, maybe it'll be January. They could be due as soon as February, so it could be May, but it could be the end of February. So we've kind of put aside everything else in our lives in anticipation of that. The awards would be made in late May, so the winners announced, the losers announced, and then July 1, planning begins. So there's a designated amount of months within a range that you can use for the planning process. If you're looking at a calendar where you wanna be on a regular academic calendar, it would be about July 1 to September of the next year. So that would be the time where the program would actually be written and the location, you know, prepared, and all of your supplies. and all of your supplies gotten and that kind of thing. And then as soon as the facility opens, boom, you're in implementation. So we would hope that would be September of 2019. And this is a grant that it's both planning and implementation. They're not two separate things. So you do have to go flow right from one to the other. So the amounts. You can see that there are two categories of awards: the smaller schools and the bigger schools. So less than 150 versus 150 or more. You can see that they have an emphasis on secondary education here because they're giving that $100,000 sort of bonus that we would qualify for with any, you know, award. And then you'll see that the totals down there are 800,000 or 900,000, depending on the school size. So, oh, that's Erica. So, you know, if you want to know more, they're having an online training about this on January 12. So if you're curious to get all the details, it's a couple hours. You can sign up on DPI's website.
So I just want to go through something really quick because as Anna mentioned, one of the areas of priority for funding under the grant is educationally disadvantaged students. And as we develop our program more in-depth over the next couple of months, we will be expanding our language on how our program is designed to focus on these students. But certainly, where we believe this program would be fantastic for all students, we are committed to developing a personalized program with the intent to serve our families that for whatever reason are struggling in the traditional academic system. To accomplish this, we lean on our focus of personalized and project-based learning aimed at providing students tangible, real-world experiences with the potential to have huge impacts on student engagement, achievement, and college and career readiness. Certainly, we have a lot of research that backs up the claims that project-based and personalized learning can dramatically improve engagement for disadvantaged students, close the achievement gap, improve intrinsic motivation, raise critical thinking skills, appreciate peer-to-peer learning, and improve outcomes for all students. We've already seen district-wide or at least school-specific investments directly related to closing the gaps for academically disadvantaged students. What we are proposing places children in an environment where they are getting more personalized attention and where teachers and students are able to work collaboratively to design projects and opportunities that help each specific child achieve their academic goal. In addition to leaning on PBL, our staff will utilize a personalized learning platform or system such as what's used at McKinley or in the Arctic Zone, some of the other innovation zones. And this is really just to tailor the education to each child's specific skill set. So that really reaches those disadvantaged students who are maybe being left behind in other programs. So this is a definition from the Institute of Personalized Learning, which is a division of CISA I. So we really see that personalized learning, when we combine it with project-based learning, could have the potential to really reach out to these educationally disadvantaged populations within the district. And we've really come to a place where we believe that this school will fill a much-needed gap in our education system here in Eau Claire. For whatever reason, students who do not fit in our traditional program will have a home at this school. It is our mission to tailor this program to meet all students where they are. And we believe that a program centered on personalized and project-based learning, particularly that which incorporates the real-life and outdoor experiences that we talked about earlier, will greatly improve academic, social, and behavioral engagement for our kids.
All right, I'm Becca. So I'm guessing that you have a lot of questions and a lot of dollar signs maybe come before those questions. So the good news is that, as of tonight, we are not asking for allocation of any new money, any new allocation. So, you know, we have put together some preliminary estimates of costs of, you know, what it would take to get this building ready to go, what would the startup cost be of the program, what would the ongoing operational cost be? That work is not complete, and we need to partner with the district if we want to complete that work. And, you know, we also haven't had the chance to consider possible sources of income. Like I said, we haven't felt free to go out with your blessing and investigate those opportunities. So, you know, it would be our intention that we would get all that information to you before submitting the grant application. So what are we asking for? So we're asking tonight to continue working with the LEAP Committee, have them advise and assist us in just advancing this work that we've been doing already. We're asking for access to a couple of staff members for up to 20 hours so they can advise us and fill out that pedagogical language that we've used in our imagination narrative. We're passionate, but we think that we need the professionals to come in and like really breathe life into that academic model in preparation for planning. And that would easily fit under the existing LEAP budget, so no new money there. We need your permission to forge and strengthen those community partnerships that we need to give this program deep roots in our community and, you know, authorize members of LEAP to help us do that. Thank you. And finally, you know, we'd like your approval to continue working through LEAP and the Budget Development Committee and other district offices to estimate the cost of the program and how we might fund that funding to cover costs, like I said. You know, this includes, you know, filling out those costs for renovations or are there repairs or are there remodels? We'll find out. At Little Red, you know, exploring other locations if Little Red is not feasible and, you know, to fill out cost estimates for things like program development and supplies. And to investigate, you know, what are the charitable contributions from individuals that might be out there? Corporate philanthropy, public funds, foundations, in addition to this grant that might be able to help us get this thing up and running. So we've made a picture of the future. This is one of two, so just bear with us for a sec. So you guys are in the driver's seat as of now. So we're making our pitch. We understand we're a committee report tonight, so we're not going to get any decision tonight. But hopefully on January 8, we could like be on the consent resolution agenda and you would approve us to go forward, and it would be fantastic. And we would go over here to the second green rectangle. So what happens if you allow us to do that? What's it going to cost you? Well, the grant writing would, I think, in large part be done by our group. And guess what? We are free! We're volunteers! No new money. We would like that 40 hours of staff time to assist us. Easily fits with under the LEAP budget, no new money. Minimal other time, so like if we wanted to call one of your offices and ask for an estimate for something, you know, we think there'd be minimal time that your employees would have to give us. We anticipate it wouldn't be too much. We anticipate they'd be salaried, so no new money. And then this outreach that we want to do, it's going to be led, again, by the very free people, us. So no new money, so that's great. Now, what if you say no? On January, you say, "No, thank you. Thanks for your presentation. We enjoyed it. You were fabulous. However, we're not interested for whatever reason." Well, it's status quo. You're not out anything. It is what, you know, we are kind of where we are. Well, you guys are. We might look for another authorizer, might find a district, might find a college, or maybe we would, you know, quietly go back to our families who would get to see us again and, you know, our kids would have less screen time. But, you know, for you guys, you would be where you're at tonight. So us, who knows? However, if you continue this work with us, we would hopefully be doing that grant work over the next couple of months. Then we'd come back to you and say, "Can we go ahead and submit this?" Again, if you say no, status quo, all the stuff I just said. If you say yes, we would submit it whenever that deadline comes due. And then in May, we would get a yes or a no. So if yes, yay, money! So we would get, you know, up to a $900,000 award, $150,000 to plan. Fabulous. If no, we're back to status quo. We also are in a potential resubmit situation where we could wait a year and resubmit. There's no downside to having been turned down. Page two of the future. So if we do get that planning grant, you know, the district and our group would form a team of professionals and we would go ahead and plan that program. Over that time period, it was a bit more than a year, like a July to September situation. Now we've done the planning. Are things ready to go? Is Little Red Nature Campus ready to open as envisioned? If yes, you get another yay! Yes, we're ready to go! $750,000 max to go ahead and implement over the next few years. If no, there could be lots of reasons for no, right? We could determine that the project's not feasible. Again, you're at status quo. There's a minimum amount of students you must have. You must have at least 40 students in two grades. Maybe nobody wants to come and no one signs up. Well, you're not, you know, you're back to status quo. Or maybe we had our hearts set on Little Red. Little Red's not ready. Oh darn. Are we out of luck, Erica? Okay. There could be a temporary or alternative location. And then you get back up to yay, but if not, then you go down to no. So anyway, my interpretation of the next few months. Okay, is that the end of my bean camming?
That's the end of your bean camming. I'm going to give you guys the final spiel and then we'll let you go home. So a few weeks ago, some members of our organization were lucky enough to sit down and have a conversation about this with Dr. Hardbeck. And at one point, we were discussing fair and equitable admissions. And she asked us what we would do if our own kids didn't get into the school. And it brought up a good question: why are we here? Why a group of parents? Why a community group? Well, we're proposing this school because everything that, all the research that we have done, and it's been nearly two years' worth, has proven to us that not all children are the same. And we can't teach all kids the same thing all the time in the same way and expect it to fit all of our kids. We decided to advocate for choice in our middle school program because we believe that all children and families deserve this opportunity. And that's why we chose to come here. That's why we chose public education for this idea. And if you told us that our kids wouldn't get in, we'd still be doing this anyway. Ultimately, we believe that one day this is how every child will be taught. We believe that our district can be a regional leader in bringing an innovative middle school to Eau Claire. We would be so lucky to have you as partners in bringing this incredible vision to life. We are excited to support the district as it creates avenues for innovation. Eau Claire could forge a new path in public education and build on the tremendous momentum and support for innovative schools within our state. This board has already laid the groundwork for a program like this to succeed. In order to determine what is possible for the feasibility of this school, we need the board to be our partners in this endeavor and approach this with the enthusiasm and excitement that we have. It is possible that in two to three months, we will come back to you and say that it is in fact not possible right now. But we're never going to know that unless we try. So we are asking you to go down this path with us and approve us to develop this program and a new charter school grant through the Wisconsin DPI. We want to thank the board for the opportunity to allow us to be here today, even though we're incredibly nervous, and for making it possible through LEAP and your support of innovative programs for our little organization to dream big and see what's possible. Thank you very much for your time. And with that, we would be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. I open it up to the board for questions, clarifications. Commissioner Duex.
Do you have a concept of what size school you think you could sustain? And how many staff, you know, to...
Right, well, I mean, it's important to us to keep those staffing ratios similar to the district. And we've seen that work in the Arctic Zone. Based on the building capacity as it was used before, we think it'd be about 150 kids. But we think that we could really nail that down better once the program is designed and we can understand better how the staff would be used and how the space would be used.
Commissioner Lugganville.
I didn't even turn my light on, but you saw my finger, didn't you? Well, you know, when I hear your name, Indy, I think automatically of Indiana Jones. Indy, you know, so to me, that's fitting because you are all adventurers in public education. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for bringing this to us and for being nervous and coming up. In a lot of ways, this is Back to the Future. Another 80's movie, I guess. And I was born in the 90's. About 30 years ago, Little Red Staff and Families worked very hard to develop the Prairie and Nature Trail System. And this was done to develop a Prairie and Wetland curriculum out there. A regionally relevant science curriculum. Which, if you fast forward to now, is exactly what you're looking at. Tweaked a little bit, but I'm also very happy that what you're proposing in part is a district extension campus. Because I think that when you talk about a program that can only allow so many students, you know, you hear comments in the community, "Well, this is only benefiting them." Well, it would benefit the whole school district and perhaps you'd have other districts having field trips there, you know. Or kids who are being homeschooled in other areas wanting to come there, which may be a bridge to bringing them to the public schools. You know, one of the things that I really appreciate is that your group is talking about how you don't have all the tools. I appreciate that you've been mindful about not wanting to grow your planning team without a green light from us to move forward with that. One thing, as the board's special education liaison that I'm very interested in, is making sure that you have folks in your planning group who are particularly involved in that area so that we're inclusive of students with special needs, mental health challenges. I think that would be a wonderful thing to bring to the table. And I'm sure that you're already thinking about that. It was in your slide. You know, in our surveys with families, we are hearing more and more that students and parents want a few things. They want relevancy. They want to feel engaged. Parents want rigor. Families want choice in their education, choice in the public system. I think that if done right, a few years from now, this could deliver in all of those areas. Because Commissioner Harder and I are so hip, we were hanging out at Starbucks a few weeks ago. And it's not hip?
Not really.
Okay, well. Yikes. Well, anyways, I thought we were pretty hip to do it. And we happened to run into a man who works for the U.S. Forest Service. And he was so interested in this idea. We'd mentioned it offhand with him just because he was wearing a fleece that said "U.S. Forest Service," which was a dead giveaway. And so I went up to him and said, "Do you work for the U.S. Forest Service?" And he talked to us a little bit. And he was so interested in this idea that he sent it on to some leaders in the U.S. Forest Service and folks that work in Wisconsin who are interested in this. And there are so many partnership and research opportunities out there in the development of this. That was just one example, a random guy at Starbucks. But I think we've also seen tonight, from the folks who are here representing the business community and other sectors, how many people are interested and excited in this. Another way that this is Back to the Future that I can speak from experience is when I was in middle school at DeLonge, we had an environmental educational program that I was a part of called the Half Moon Lake Project, which many of you might remember. Project-based learning, environmental education. It had science, art, writing, reading, all blended together in an amazing program at Carson Park and on the lake. And that's personalized environment that I still think about. It benefited me and hundreds of other kids. And that was in 2006. So personally, I think this idea has a great deal of promise. And while your proposal is in its very early stages, I personally believe that it's worth exploring further. If I'm understanding correctly, all you're asking for tonight is to keep exploring this and to have our blessing to keep exploring this with no further strings attached than that. And I think that that is a very reasonable ask. In my opinion, you're not often met with an opportunity to, number one, rejuvenate an existing building in our district. Number two, rewrite a very difficult chapter in Eau Claire history with Little Red. Number three, provide an innovative and supportive opportunity for students and families. Number four, provide community agencies and businesses with a new vibrant chance to partner with our district. I'd have a really hard time finding something that could do all of those things. So for those reasons and more, I am very much in support of letting you explore this. I think it's a great idea in its early stages.
Anyone else have comment? Commissioner Boo.
I also want to add what Commissioner Luganville just mentioned a few point. But before I mention anything, I want to congratulate you for doing a good job of doing your research, thinking about how you will present and including what we want to know. Almost all my questions were answered. The one thing you were right, and that is the dollar that attached. Also, in your reason to do this is to use a project-based learning and personalized learning model. And then in doing that, you referenced quite a bit about reaching out to all students. So my other questions popped up. If you were to reach out to all students, that includes people that are not necessarily the same color or learning style. And if I'm not wrong, tonight, your planning committee does not include the other kind of people that might have different perspective in your lens. So if I were to encourage this development in the future, I'd like to see a diverse thinker in the beginning stage. And I also would like to see that the district helping someone grow, it doesn't mean that the district will get smaller. So we need to be able to see that this is a win-win for the community. Thank you.
Anyone else comment? Commissioner Duex. Anybody else? Commissioner Becca? Go ahead.
I guess I maybe have three questions or about three areas moving forward. And I too thank you for this well-written proposal. My first question is about fair and equitable admissions. And so this is, I appreciated what you added that was extra that's not in the proposal. And the proposal talked about a kind of a process of random selection and in fact even priority given to teachers or to staff members' children. That was in the proposal that we have. So I guess I'd like to see more information about some evidence, how would you go about fair equitable admissions process? I'd like to see some evidence of the knowledge or research on how to recruit and retain educationally disadvantaged students, what you would incorporate in a program to ensure that they would flourish. I'm interested, you made reference to Minnesota Department of Education, the initiative to incorporate environmental education to a diverse cross-section of public schools around the state. I'm curious if you've considered more of an infusion model? Would you consider a program that would take the existing three middle schools and bring this programming to those middle schools as opposed to creating a new structure, a new program? And one other... I guess my third point is that would you consider going on with a program if that program were to be just the nature campus and not the homeschool for 150 students? That you would gear a program really to serve all students in the district, not which one could perceive was a fairly small number of students? And I understand the connection to the funding. But if you move forward and it was the nature campus, I guess how would that fit with your goals and aspirations? And those are my three questions.
Those are action-packed questions. Commissioner Becca, would you like us to do what we can to address them now? Or is that something you'd like us to follow up on later? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Duex.
Well, I want to thank you for your presentation. It was very well done. I get excited about this kind of learning myself. A few years ago, though, we had a very good proposal come before us. And the bottom line was the money. And we had to turn it down. And so, it's just a word to the wise that every, you know, "Show me the money." So, thank you so much for coming tonight. It was very well done. Appreciate all your enthusiasm.
Does anybody else, any of the board members have comments? Student reps, do you have? Go ahead. Go ahead, Ryan.
Well, thanks for coming again. I think in the era of testing, national testing, state testing, it's great to see community-parent-based learning and education nowadays. So thank you. I'm really excited for that. A few questions that I have. So where's the downside of come for the students when going to the school? Like, what do the students lack in terms of going on to high school and on to college? What are they missing out on?
Well, I feel like what we're providing, like I said in the presentation, I mean, that's a really good question because it's definitely something we've considered. Is, you know, what is, how are these children going to be prepared for their high school experience and their post-secondary experience? And I really feel that the skills that they are going to learn, and at least what our research has shown us, that the skills that children and students learn through executing projects create in them, as one of the Arctic Zone parents talked about earlier, is they learn how to be their best selves. They learn how to be their best learners. So they know, they enter high school, they don't have to learn that the hard way. They don't have to learn that in the rigor of high school. They sort of already will know that. And so they can approach their high school learning in sort of a new way, where they feel more confident in themselves. At least that's how I envision project-based learning to really have a strong effect in that way.
Okay, a question. With this project-based learning, do you expect there to be a gap between the students who don't go to this, don't attend this in the middle schools, and against the people who do attend this? So what kind of gap will that create by people who just attend or started along South and this?
Well, my hope is that as we develop the program over the next few months, that really what we're creating is the same academic standards. So the children at our proposed facility are learning the same things. They're just learning it in a different way. And that method of how they learn those things has some intrinsic benefits that maybe the traditional program for certain students doesn't assist them with that. And so we're really looking at getting that excitement, that engagement, that enthusiasm. So we're hoping that academically, they learn the exact same thing. And that's what we're really gonna lean on, you know, teachers for as we develop a program and staff, is to make sure that the academic program that we develop is the same rigor as the traditional program. It just approaches it in a different way.
Okay, so I like how you touched on the learning the same stuff academically. But a big part of high school is a learning what you don't like to do, learning how to do stuff you don't like. Lab reports, papers. So how are we gonna teach that? Because I know it's student-led and student-interested.
Yeah.
So...
I think, you know, you could probably ask Andy at the Arctic Zone about how he sort of incorporates those things that kids really don't like to learn. I think that, of course, in making sure the benchmarks are hit, students are learning things that they maybe are not excited about. So over here, you have this project, let's take the structural engineering one that I referenced. Let's say that child is really excited about structural engineering and they've got this project that they're really enthused about. But it's not hitting a social studies measure, you know, thing that they need to learn for social studies. So they're gonna have to augment their edges. So they're gonna have to put that project on hold and they're gonna have to do their social studies curriculum, whatever that might be. So they're still gonna have to meet, and at least this is how I foresee it going, and it will be developed more as we go through the program development process. But I think we foresee students doing things that they do not enjoy too.
So, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, though it's student-led, it's not a free-for-all. So it's not a pick and choose what you want to learn in, you know, sort of without other requirements. And my understanding from, well, like what Wildlands does is when you're a new student in a project-based learning environment, you're getting a lot of leadership from the teacher in putting those projects together. So, you know, by the time they get in 12th grade in Wildlands, you know, they are kind of the boss of themselves and they're putting their projects together. But if they come in at seventh, they start with a lot of structure. So I think certainly if sixth graders were to come in this environment, there would be, you know, standards they had to meet in all the subjects and they'd be getting a lot of guidance about how to get there.
So one more question. So the board says yes in this January, right? So just looking into it?
Yes, they will. Yes.
And they don't have to say yes again until September, you're saying?
Well, we don't know for sure. So what we're hoping for is an initial yes and then a yes to a grant application submission. And that would be, we don't know, February through May, somewhere in there.
So if you get this grant from the state, what would it be from? Would that be taking away money from the school districts who maybe have a little more forward on this than we are right now? So like, say you get the grant. You get everything done, you look into it, spend a lot of money. Then the board says no, it comes down to it. So are you taking away maybe it's from somebody who was a little farther in the process?
Well, you know, that's a great question. I actually think that this project is much further along in the process than a lot of those grant competitors. I think she said there are gonna be 115 grants put out. So, you know, there is enough to go around to many districts in the state, which is awesome. And, you know, this was announced on October 6th. And I think a lot of districts on October 6th started thinking of an idea. I mean, I'm just guessing. But I would imagine that many ideas were, you know, got off the ground after that, where this has, you know, been in the planning processes for almost two years. So I think that we, that, you know, we are well-positioned to compete for this grant and that it's, you know, as worthy a project as I need to compete for that money.
Okay. That's all I have. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Lauren?
Yeah, I have a few. They're mostly similar to Ryan's. As one of them is, you mentioned there is a limited optional or no homework policy. But something we've always been told when we ask our teachers, "Why do we have to have homework?" They say it's because we can't teach you everything you need to know in class, so part of it needs to be self-learning. And if students don't have that outside of class learning, then how are they learned, like, would that, is there potential for that to create a gap? Or no?
Oh, that's a very good question. I think that what we have looked at is similar programs to this across the state and across the country that are looking at homework as maybe a detriment to that whole child experience. And I understand there's that balance between academic, and that's why we kind of hyphenated that with, you know, limited, no, or choice. We don't really know how that's gonna develop yet. I think that that has to come as we develop the program and really give it its roots. And that probably actually would not be developed, I would not venture a guess, until that initial year of planning as we really piece the program together. How are the kids gonna learn? Where are they gonna learn it? How are they gonna learn it? Are they gonna learn it at home? Are they gonna learn it at school? I think that homework will be something that we just want to be flexible on because we think that the research shows that that whole child education really lacks when they're bombarded at home with homework and they can't just be students, be kids. So...
And if it's a learning how you learn thing, this is a great approach. PBL is a great approach to do it. You know, as we heard from, you know, the Arctic Zone parent, that I think a lot of that learning will be taking place during school hours. And these kids really get to know themselves well when they use this kind of system.
And then one more. With standardized testing would still be required for these students. Considering that a lot of their learning is project-based, I'm assuming they'd be having less, like, kind of structured tests in the way that the other schools would be having them. And then, because it mentioned a lot of self-assessments, I think that these students would still be prepared for like the format of, you know, the ACT or the WKC or ACT Aspire. I don't remember all the ones that we took in middle school. But, I mean, would there be an issue with that? Do you think that it'll be okay?
So when we say self-assessment, what we're really primarily talking about is the students would be setting their goals and then they would be assessing their progress and sort of redetermining those goals along with their teachers. As far as, you know, and really the instructor, I imagine, would be sort of setting benchmarks too, and those students would need to be reaching those benchmarks. So rather than maybe taking a structured one, two, three, you know, fill-in-the-blank, whatever, you know, testing however, you know, testing is done in the traditional program, I feel like they would be doing more monitoring every day. So self-assessing their progress and what they're learning and how they're learning and being able to repeat that content back to their teachers in a more sort of in keeping with their project, like a presentation on their project. As far as standardized tests go, there are a lot of highly successful programs just like this that participate in every standardized test. Wildlands is one of them. The Arctic Zone participates in all the standardized tests. The Wisconsin DPI actually does allow a waiver on standardized testing, so you can get out of it. And we're not falling hard on one side of this or the other. But we definitely want to explore all of the options as far as how we approach standardized testing. But certainly, this program model, project-based learning, personalized learning, it experiences great success on standardized tests. Wildlands is extraordinary on their standardized testing. So it's possible that we will stay on the same track as everybody else.
Those were all of my questions, but to repeat what everybody else said, that was a fantastic presentation. Like, I'll just take some notes on that for my next speech.
Thanks, Lauren. Commissioner Torres.
Thank you. Thank you for the initiative. I really appreciate when members of the public comes with ideas to support equitable education. I liked, I also liked to hear that in all the list of things that you have imagined to do in the future, I can see that we are actually already doing those things, those efforts in our schools. My concern is in terms of keeping the foot grounded in the costs. We have just made a great effort in to adjust the teacher-student ratio for our schools, and that was possible only after a referendum. I don't see how easily we could adjust more because the staffing for this initiative would be a complete new charge for our budget. So that doesn't mean that the proposal is not interesting. So I just wanted to share with you that concern.
Commissioner Harder.
I think Commissioner Torres raises an excellent point as chair of the Budget Committee and also as a member of the LEAP Committee who's had my eye on this project for a while. I've shared that concern. How in a usually budget-constrained scenario would we pay for this and how in a particularly budget-constrained scenario we find ourselves in this year and in the coming years with our focus on compensation, retention, and attraction of high-quality staff, which we've agreed to as a priority? Can we justify a cost like this one? So I think that's a very important question. I will also say as a member of the LEAP Committee that I've, and again, as a member of the Budget Committee, I've very much encouraged us to look at LEAP initiatives as something that will definitely have some development costs attached to it, but should be relatively cost-neutral, once they're up and running in terms of staffing ratios. And I think that was referenced earlier by Anna and Erica. But I really hope that that the development time, should it be approved by the board here, will show that there are other ways to get this to happen. And the flexibility on whether it's in Little Red or not, I think is helpful. The possibility of other sources of funding, which Commissioner Luganville mentioned, I think is also very real. I'm upbeat about this project. I'll just put it out there. I think it's a good thing. If you listened to me as I was campaigning at all, which you might not have, but this was my big thing, is creating choice in this district, more choice. We've got some great choices. And the mainstream program is amazing, doing amazing things. And we've got some great innovation zones providing choice on top of that. So I'd like to see more of it personally. So I'm, in case anybody was wondering, I'm fully on board with this too.
Anyone else have comments?
I would maybe just like to conclude with mine. I've walked the grounds out at Little Red. I was downtown one day, I think it was for the Harvest Festival or something, and we had a table for the district, which we do all the time now, which I love. And someone came up to me and said, "After Little Red closed, we just kept going there." And I looked at her and she said, "Until we got yelled at because somebody had a tree stand or something and they were hunting deer," I guess. And so I told my husband, Steve, who's a deer hunter, "We should just go out there and walk the grounds," a couple of years ago. And so we did. And I had never really done that before. I'd been out to Little Red as a teacher and whatever, but I had not walked those grounds. Those grounds need children. Those grounds are full of learning for our kids. I mean, the signs and the benches are slowly atrophying away, but I get goosebumps when I think about what learning could take place on that 30 acres. I know that we've talked as a district that it pays for itself as storage, but it's more than storage. And we need to kind of work that out and and talk about this and see how we can make this go. The other thing I wanted to bring up quickly is public schools sit in a different place right now in our country. in our country. When people come to us from the community, or when we talk about providing innovation, we want to do it in the public schools. We don't want it taken elsewhere. So, I know the budget is an issue. It's going to be an issue till we can fix it. So everybody needs to watch Wisconsin Eye and the new Commission on Funding. But I really feel that we need to dig here and see if, see what we can do with this and get everybody's questions answered. I'm hoping, as I sat at Friday at the university Eggs and Issues, and Chancellor Schmidt talked about their budget, and he put up the picture of the Sonatags, who had given the money for what they're doing down on the riverfront. And they talked about business, and they talked about things that fed into the university, and they never once mentioned our public schools, which is where many, many of their kids come from. So as we look at the confluence, and as we look at who we're building as a community here in Eau Claire, I couldn't possibly not say, "Let's, let's explore this and see where we can take it." So, thank you for all the work you put into this. I sit on LEAP as well. And you've done a yeoman's work on what you presented tonight, and I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Any, any additions and any comments from the audience? Come on up, state your name. You have, you have a few minutes apiece, maybe since it's 9:30 already, a couple of minutes, but thank you.
I'll just take a very few minutes. My name is Karen Boss, and I live at S. 7345 County Road B, which is about three miles as the crow flies east of Little Red School. Both my daughters went to Little Red School. I collected a whole lot of those prairie seeds that went into Little Red School Prairie from road sides in Eau Claire County, and I know that land like the back of my hand. You couldn't pick a better place to nurture an outdoor education curriculum, a better setting where a child could step out the school door and step into a prairie, step into an area that has so much going for it, but has so many opportunities for kids to vision the future on that site as well. There's so much else that can be done there. You're right, the signs are deteriorating, and so are the...
Benches are still there.
Yep. But I have in my mind this vision of an entire school of students at Little Red dressed in their, their version of, of, what do you call the people that go across the prairie? I'm sorry, I'm not thinking of it right now. But from the olden days, they came. We had seeds and ice cream pails mixed up with sand. We had that prairie divided into quadrants for each class, and the students were out there, and the parents were watching. They planted that prairie, and they watched it grow. And I've had kids come back to me decades later, talking about what that experience meant to them. We had collaboration from lots of local, Huntsinger Farms, for instance, did the work on the land for us to help prepare for that prairie site. Some other, and I'm afraid my memory has kind of skipped on me, but it was either Presto or Owen Ares that provided funding that helped us buy seeds to supplement what we had. We had bluebird trails, a running trail, interpretive signs, and that prairie wetland curriculum that you mentioned. Connie Molson, whose name has changed, I don't remember what it is now, but we had, we had fourth graders from the whole school district coming out there, discovering the creatures right here from Wisconsin, and the diversity right there. It's just such an opportunity, and I really hope that you'll seriously consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments? Come on up.
I know you're just moaning. I really wasn't going to speak, so I'll be quick, and these people need to get their kids to bed. I'm Joe Burke, 5600 Tower Drive. This is deja vu, and I think it was Catherine, probably, hmm, that's it, Tim, who was here years ago, seven years ago, actually. It was January 25th, 2011. And I just, I guess my point is, based on the candor you had and Dr. Torres had about budget, all that you guys presented is tremendously well-received, I'm sure, and it's reminiscent of exactly what we did. When we proposed charter school, it was different. Arts and culture. The idea of how it would benefit the district was portrayed, the reception was great. The questions were the same. We got the planning grant. We were able to get a governance board together. We had a location. We had staff about to be hired. And ultimately, as we tried to get our implementation grant, it was a no based on two things. The timing is wrong, and the money isn't there. So my motivation for coming up today is to think, if I will lie awake tonight, if I think these people, these heroes, will spend the next year doing what we did, and giving your heart and soul to something, to be told, after all this great reception, that the money isn't there, and the timing isn't right. So, why not? Because, as you know, the wolf is at the door. And whereas seven years ago it might not have been as bad, privatization is coming. And the instrumentality charter schools, that were three when we applied, and independent instrumentality charter schools are private. And the DPI provides money to them through the same, $95 million will be in the same pot. And those nine now, independent, are coming this way. They're not just in Milwaukee. So if I were a board member, as cynical as I can, I get, I would say, "We can't afford not to do this." And I'm not a budget person, so I'm not pretending to know. Your responsibility fiscally is paramount. But when you look at the big picture, and you all agree that this is the right thing to do for kids, but we don't have the money, you find the money. You have better money. The time is better, and the people here as leaders in our community are better. So I hope you'll just do the right thing and not make them go through this for another year. Thanks.
State name and address, please.
I'm John Clevin, 2007 Abbey Hill Drive, and I'm an alum of the Eau Claire Area School District. So I went to, I went to McKinley School, and Black School, and then DeLong, and then North High School. And I just was totally disinterested in school. And, and I found out later why through education, figuring out philosophy and methodology, and how that can play a big role in a lot of kids' lives. And my, my son and daughter, they're six, they go to the Chippewa Valley Montessori School, and they're in 5K right now. And my daughter and son are doing fantastic there. They had a great preschool experience at a private Montessori school, at St. Edward's. And they're doing fantastic. But what I see my son, what I see difference in my son and my daughter, my daughter can pretty much thrive anywhere. She, she can brighten a room, she can make friends, she can lead, she can plan, she can, she's got to figure it out. She can, I think she can pretty much strive and, and make it in any school. At DeLong, that I thought was a prison when I was there. It was, it was a junior high, where you went to, you go there and you're, well, you're 13 years old, and there's, there's guys that have beards that are, you know, that are in the same hallway. Now it's a middle school. But my, my daughter, she could, she could pretty much make it in any, and her teacher, the, her former teachers that are here can attest. My son is different. My son is like me, and I can see, I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward, or I'm looking to the future, and I'm thinking, "He's going to be just as disenfranchised as I was in school. He's not, he's not engaging in the, in the normal way of learning." And there's a lot of kids out there that are like that. And, and the school's doing a fantastic job for the majority, I think. And the teachers love our kids in the school district, you know. That's one common thing out of the whole time that I've been a part of, that I've been in Eau Claire my whole life, is that you could tell that the teachers really had a concern, a care, and a love for the success, and the, and the school board as well. Thank you all for being a part of this and helping this hopefully move forward. But I think, to kind of talk about what Ryan was saying, who can and who can't, and I really think that there, that small disenfranchised group, I think, could populate a, a school like this. And I think that we could see people like my, or kids like my son be excited to go to school, like he's excited to go right now. And so I really ask for your support and your thoughtfulness in making something happen instead of have it be where, sorry again, no budget, because as we can see, the university does it. I work at the Technical College. I'm a marketing teacher there. The Technical College does it. There's no reason why the Eau Claire Area School District cannot go find funding. And I don't think it should be put on people like Erica and Anna, or people in this group. It should be collectively, all of us, using our resources and the people that we know, the people that we're networked with, and not just to say, "No, no funding." It's, "This is a good project, and this is worthy of it. We are going to use our resources, the people that we know, maybe you're best friends with the Sonatags too. I know we're going to use all of our resources as well." So I really, I, I ask and hope that, that you will find another answer other than, "No, there's no funding." Thank you.
Thank you. One more? Come on up.
Name is Nick Novak. I live at 210 Ferry Street, Eau Claire, Shawtown neighborhood, a two-block portage from the Chippewa River. And I paddle past Little Red all the time, even December. I have a dream. It's not as profound as some, it's less altruistic than others, but it is among the reasons I bother to get up in the mornings and why I work so hard for our community. I used to teach in the Eau Claire Area School District. Many of my friends still do. It's here where I grew up, here where I call home. Not a day goes by where I don't imagine what could be for the greater good of us all. I call that what could be environmental civics. It's a discipline, a culture, an economy, a foundation for a school. A school at which I might someday teach and learn, a school to which I might someday walk, bike, or canoe, a short commute downstream along the Chippewa River. A school and its grounds built and maintained by young people who care. Students who have the freedom to choose what and how they learn, students full of passion, integrity, discipline, work ethic. A school run by teachers who give their hearts and souls for something different, something better. A school of the earth, surrounded by woods and water and dirt, not a jail with desks and hall passes and plastic food. A school where people go outside, whether it's hot or cold, where students, teachers, principals, parents, politicians, and citizens plan what will be grown, harvested, cooked, and preserved. A school where students write the menu, sharpen their own knives, set their own tables, wash and put away their own dishes. A school where butchery is both a project and a class. Where students, male and female, learn carpentry, stone masonry, sewing, electrical and mechanical repair, as well as history, language, music, science, mathematics. An environmental civic school of, by, and for the earth, as well as of, by, and for the people, is a school where conservatism and progressivism work hand in hand in an atmosphere of mutual respect, where ideas are discussed and deliberated upon with reason and decency. A school where students learn how to talk with people who may look, speak, and think differently, where dissent is encouraged, where choice and accountability are one and the same. A school that runs its own governing board, whose representatives attend and infiltrate meetings within our broader community. A school that registers people to vote and runs candidates for elective office. A school that asks not what your community can do for you, but rather, what can you do for your community? Obviously, Little Red Nature Campus has to happen, and you all should vote yes. But let's dream even bigger. Let's turn all of our public schools into nature campuses. Let's practice environmental civics every day of our lives. And let's, just for fun, print a whole bunch of T-shirts featuring Smokey the Bear. Remember, kids, only you can save democracy. Thank you for your time. Thank you for serving your community.
Thank you. Anna?
Madam President, I know it's quite late. We do have a child who's been waiting to speak, and I was wondering if we could have one more comment?
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lou Deutsch, and I live at N. 50666 Hogstead Road, Ossie, Wisconsin. I am 10 years old, and I'm in fifth grade.
Can you do me a favor, because we really want to hear you? Can you put your, your face closer to the mic? There you go, because we really want to hear your voice. Thank you.
Through open enrollment, I have attended an elementary school in the Eau Claire Area School District since 4K. I am here tonight to show my support for Little Red Nature School. The traditional middle schools available are not well-suited for me and how I learn. I do not know where or what I will be doing for sixth grade. I am a farmer, and I work hard with my parents at the small business that our family has. I am an independent hard worker and enjoy learning when I am doing hands-on tasks. I spend all of my free time outside. In 2016, I started a lawn mowing and snow shoveling business. My time spent not in school is very different than a lot of other kids my age. My interests, knowledge, and focus is different, and that does not make school challenging, because school is designed for kids not like me. I am excited about the opportunity that this school could bring to me and other kids like me. This school would work very well for me, because it would give me the freedom to learn in the way that I learn best. I would enroll in the Eau Claire School District for middle school if this school program was available to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. That moves us on. That moves us on to, yeah, we can give him a clap. Thanks, everyone. That moves us on to our last discussion and possible first reading of new policy 1813, home visiting. We'll pull it up and do a first reading. I can, I can start. I have it up here on my computer. There we go. Patty, you're fast. Somebody want to start reading? Go ahead, Erin.
Home visiting. The Eau Claire Area School District may provide services and activities through home visiting that promote secure family-child relationships and help families provide high-quality learning experiences in language, literacy, mathematics, social and emotional functioning, approaches to learning, science, physical skills, and creative arts. Land in partnership with the families. Home visits take place to provide educational supports and instruction. Enhance the roles of families and educators in the growth and development of their child. Build healthy, nurturing family-student-school relationships. Strengthen families and support the family's home setting as the student's primary learning environment. Home visits shall utilize evidence-based curriculum and practices that are developmentally, linguistically, and culturally responsive. I'll just go to the end.
Go ahead.
The executive director of teaching and learning shall develop and maintain a home visiting guide for all district staff. The Eau Claire Area School District shall partner with other community educational institutions and agencies to ensure the implementation of evidence-based practices. For the purposes of this policy, home may be defined as a primary residence or a temporary residence. This definition may include a shelter or other temporary lodging.
Any comments or input? We looked hard about doing a home visiting policy for a while now. So if there's no input, we'll move that on to the consent agenda? Sound okay? They will be working on a handbook, as Joe said. Commissioner Duex?
Do you feel this covers everything that you need to cover?
Yes, because we want to really leave it to teachers, principals, and others to develop that guide. And so that, so the guide then will serve as an exhibit to this policy, right next to it on the website.
Okay. One thing before we adjourn. Patty, who's on agenda setting next? Charles? Okay. So Charles, you can't leave till we set a date. Okay? Sorry. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner...
Do you do future agenda items first?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Future agenda items. Go ahead. Laurie?
Is it appropriate to ask for new committee membership to DEMO and Trends as a future agenda item, or is that handled differently?
That will come up. I mean, I don't, I think the list is ready to go, so that'll automatically come, right? The additions to the DEMO trends? Yeah. We just had that discussion... that discussion this week. I think we have one more discussion and then we're ready to go. Okay? Thank, good question. Commissioner Torres?
Yeah, could we request a report from the dual immersion program?
Got that down? A report from the dual immersion program. Commissioner Vu? Vivile then.
He was just me.
Okay. Go ahead. Commissioner Vika?
I guess, would it be appropriate to ask for a status kind of update as a new item on the Eau Claire Academy?
I think so.
Yes. We sent a written report to you in Friday's letter. So if you let me know what elements you would like to pursue, I'd be happy to put that together for you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Now I can have a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
I do something wrong every meeting. Who, who moved it first? Commissioner Vu? Commissioner, Commissioner Luganbill and Commissioner Duex. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. We are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.